Called the meeting to order for Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2024-07, April 2nd, 2024. Those who would like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. Thy name is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Entertained a motion from council to approve the consent agenda.
It's a move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, consent agenda is passed unanimously. At this time, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. We have Ms. Jamie Riley, I hope. Shane Baker will be presenting the proclamation.
I'm sure I'll listen before me.
Whoever wants to come up, yeah, we'll take, we'll take everybody.
All right, we have a whole group.
Bring the puppy.
Bring them up, bring them all up.
Michael, John.
Wait, the dog's involved?
Sure.
Wendy.
Oh.
Josiah.
Great.
John, come right on up, front center. Introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, spread out on both sides of Councilman Baker. Get on, get on both sides, however you'd like to do it.
Oh, boy.
And if anybody wants to take pictures, keep in mind, you can come up here as close as you want and take the picture. It's not, it's not a problem.
So, this is a proclamation National Child Abuse Prevention Month, whereas it is estimated nationally that more than 1,540 children die each year from child abuse and neglect. And whereas child abuse is a serious public health problem, with studies documenting the link between abuse and a wide range of medical, emotional, psychological, and behavioral disorders. And whereas child abuse prevention is a community responsibility that requires partnerships among various agencies that work with children. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Wycomico County Council proclaim April 2024 as National Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Thank you, County Council, for the recognition. While we are here, I wanted to say an incredible thank you to our team. Wycomico does it right, the way that we investigate, prosecute, and treat victims of child abuse, and we couldn't do it without these really great people. In addition, we have some great news. Josiah is a full assistance dog. His handler Wendy Meyer is joining us to assist from this point forward in the treatment of victims of child abuse at the Wycomico CAC. So, we've got a lot to celebrate today. Thank you.
You want us up here?
Yeah. Front and center, don't be shy. John's never shy any other time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the support.
Thank you.
You can leave the dog.
Yeah, the dog's cool.
Bring him over here. Next, we have a proclamation to recognize the month of April as Fair Housing Month. We have Joni Kendall? Yes, how are you? Good to see you. Councilman Jeff, Vice President Jeff Merritt will be reading the proclamation for you. How are you?
How are you? Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thanks for being with me.
Thank you. All right. Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is a proclamation for Fair Housing Month, whereas the National Fair Housing Act of 1968 prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, color, religion, or gender, individuals with disabilities, and families with children. And whereas the principle of fair housing is a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all people, and recognizes the contributions and richness tendered by a wide variety of people from diverse backgrounds, colors, ethnicities, and religious traditions. Now therefore, the Wycomico County Council proclaims April 2024 as the Fair Housing Month, and in an effort to raise awareness of fair housing for all, encourage all citizens to support putting an end to housing discrimination done the second day of April 2024, and signed by all members of the Wycomico County Council.
Thank you. Congratulations. If you'd like to say a word.
Yes, just wanted to say thank you to everyone, the county council, county executive, and our administration for recognizing us this month. And the theme for the fair housing is the act in action this year. So, once again, we just want to say thank you. Brought my colleague here, we're part of the team. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mrs. Hurley.
Good evening, Council President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. We have several public hearings on the agenda this evening. Each of the public hearing notices are posted on the county's website and were published in the local newspaper when required by law. The first public hearing is on Resolution Number 35-2024. This is to amend the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan for the property located at 1501 Pemberton Drive, Salisbury, Maryland. And we have Mr. Brian Wilkins there, engineer with the Department of Parks.
At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 35-2024. Do you have any comments that you'd like to make in reference to this specific resolution? Come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution Number 35-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 35-2024. Move. Second?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion. Good evening, Mr. Wilkins. We'll let you have the floor, and we'd like to explain this for, for the council.
Yeah, this is a, it's a request for a water sewer plan amendment, so that, I believe that this is 1501 Pemberton Drive.
Yes.
Yeah, so they can connect to public, public water sewer provided by the city of Salisbury.
Okay, right. It's a property that's off Pemberton that's contiguous with the city right now, as is for.
They're currently in the process of the annexation process.
Right.
Because that's required to connect with public services as well.
I don't know why, I don't know why they just don't let us pay for the service and go along our way, right?
Yeah.
They want everything. Any?
I'm sorry.
Yes.
Go ahead. I was, I was just going to say, because I asked the city about this one, this one is currently in the beginning of the annexation process.
Okay, that's good. Any other questions, discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 35-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously.
Next is a public hearing, Resolution Number 36-2024. This is to amend the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Plan for the property located at 2407 North Salisbury Boulevard, Salisbury, Maryland.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution 36-2024. Again, if you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Includes the public hearing for Resolution 36-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 36-2024. Move. Second?
Second.
Motion's second, discussion. Mr. Wilkins?
This is the same situation here, they're trying to connect to public city services, water and sewer. I didn't, the council noticed, this was actually the only property in that whole area that isn't designated as S1W1. I'm not sure why that is. I guess it just got left behind.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor of Resolution 36-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
Thank you.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 37-2024. This is to approve the relocation of a forest conservation easement containing 0.41 acres located on Tax Map 101, parcel 5489, owned by Mill Pond Village LLC, to an off-site mitigation bank. And Mr. Colin Harrison here, environmental planner, he is here if you have any questions.
This time, we open the floor for public hearing on Resolution Number 37-2024. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. That concludes the public hearing on Resolution 37-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 37-2024. Move.
Second.
Motion's second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Next is a public hearing on Resolution Number 38-2024, to approve the release of a portion of a forest conservation easement containing 0.58 acres located on Tax Map 21, parcel 92, Lot 3A-B, owned by Lanay Ann Rittenhouse and John R. Rittenhouse.
This time, we open the floor for a public hearing on Resolution 38-2024. If you have any comments, come to the podium, please state your name, county of residence, and your concerns. Okay, that concludes the public hearing on Resolution 38-2024. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 38-2024. Move. Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? Yes.
Mr.?
Mr. Harrison?
Mr. Harrison is here.
Good evening. For the public, could you just state your name and position for us?
Colin Harrison, environmental planner for Wycomico County.
Thank you.
Can you provide a little more detail and background? I'm trying to understand what was put in the document saying that they were fixing the, corrected the plot, or the plat for, for it. Can you give some background, I guess, on what's happening? So, during the original subdivision of this property, they conserved or retained more forest than what was necessary for the forest conservation worksheet. So, all in all, they were doing a good thing by retaining more forest on site. Being they conserved more, you're allowed to get back to that threshold. And then, I guess, future use of the property, is it, is it, do we know if it's going to be? Just residential. Yeah. Okay, thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions? Anything else you want to share?
No, that's about it.
All those in favor, all those in favor of Resolution 38-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, Resolution 38-2024 passes unanimously.
Next is Resolution Number 39-2024. This is extending an audit contract buying between Wycomico County, Maryland, and PKS and Company, PA, for fiscal year 2024. And we have Michael C. Kleger, CPA, and Pam Olin here, Director of Finance, if you have any questions.
All right. Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 39-2024. To move? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Resolution 39-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you for being here, Mr. Kleger.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Yeah, there she is. She is. It's time we have Angela Chetel, our CPA, our internal auditor.
Good evening. Again, I'm Ms. Chetel, CPA, internal auditor, presenting for adoption of Resolution Number 40-2024, accepting the fuel audit.
Entertained a motion from council to approve Resolution 40-2024. Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay, thank you. So, I did a fuel audit of two components, one, the WEX card, and then the other, the fuel at the Rhodes Division. And basically, the, I'm upgrading, so in the past, it's been satisfactory, I'm sorry, it's been adequate rather than satisfactory. I'm upgrading the Rhodes audit, the Rhodes pumps audit to satisfactory, while the, the WEX card's going to remain adequate. And it's not that the, the system needs to be upgraded or updated, but the department is doing as much as they can to make sure that data is being reported accurately. And so, there's a lot of manpower being used, and they're, they're doing everything they can do. So, that's kind of like the summary of it. And I just wanted to point out a couple of small points.
For the public, the two separate, the two separate means by which we distribute the fuel, one is through the Rhodes Division, correct?
Yes.
With pumps on location?
Correct.
And, and I guess maybe they do deliver sometimes, if need be?
They'll deliver to the airport, and then they deliver to, or, it's not that Rhodes delivered solid waste of it, delivers, but through their tanker.
It's delivered, yeah.
And.
And the second one is the WEX card, which is actually a card that employees use?
Correct. And they, and those employees are using it at regular public gas stations, so whereas you and I might use, like, our bank card or our credit card, then the Wycomico County employees will use the WEX card.
And your responsibility was make sure that, to, to test the efficiency of both operations?
Yeah, to test the controls.
Controls, okay.
But, yeah, ultimately, I do want to improve efficiencies as well. So, I put a couple of snapshots in here. One, there was a concern, I've heard rumors and so forth about, like, you know, Delaware, Wycomico County cars in Delaware. So, I put that, that image in here. I didn't actually, like, do any testing about, like, you know, if it was approved or not approved, but I just wanted to put it in there for, for you to see, that there's, not a terrible amount, but there is some Delaware activity. And that could be because, you know, we are on the border, and there could be things that we have to do in Delaware, and so forth. On the next page, there's also an image that shows the departments that are using the pumps at Rhodes Division. And, and this is in here because the department gave me a cost analysis that they did for the savings that would occur if departments used their fuel versus the fuel with, like, the WEX card in the public. And so, this is kind of like highlighting those departments that are, you know, trying to improve those efficiencies in terms of our purchases of fuel. And then there's three tables that go through the WEX purchases, Rhodes Divisions, and the combined fuel usage. And, and there was a concern, you know, that the Rhodes Division, it's more fuel, but then the gallons average is a little bit more than with the WEX card, and that's because the diesel fuel is more expensive. So, I just, just today, I looked at the market rates, just to give you an example, in the public, regular market prices for regular fuel, regular unleaded fuel is $3.55, whereas diesel fuel today is $4.12. So, that average is because that Rhodes Division is 95% diesel. And then, just to clarify that, that, of that, then there's, overall, there's 60% of off-road diesel, so it's not taxed, and then 35% is taxed because it's going to be going into a vehicle that's going to be driving on the roads. For instance, those tankers that are going to the airport, that tanker is on the road, but then, so for the driving of it, but then the, the gas inside that tanker that's going to be delivered to the airport is off-road, if that makes sense. So, there's three main findings and recommendations, the tank capacity be entered into the system, and that the VIN numbers be checked. And I figured, I learned that if you take a VIN number, and there's a certain database I can plug into that VIN number, and I can actually get information about that vehicle. So, even if it's not readily available for, or feasible for somebody to physically go look at a car, they can just plop that VIN number in and get what that tank capacity is, what kind of fuel that should be, that then can be entered into the system. So, whoever does this doesn't actually have to go looking at all the cars. For the odometer, there's a policy that we're supposed to be using logs, it doesn't seem to be done, and it's consistently not done. So, there's a recommendation about, about the, using the logs. The, there's a new policy in the back, and it's, it's much prettier in perfa, in person. When I did a screenshot, it looked kind of blurry, and I apologized. The department's policy looks excellent, I just want to give a, you know, good shout out to the purchasing department that spent a lot of time making that. I just was not good at screenshotting that in. So, so they're, they've developed a policy regarding the odometer logs, as well as the reviewing, and so that was my third recommendation, that there's periodic review by management. So, they, they want to, they will implement a management review. In the enhancements section, there's that the fuel upgrade is recommended, and these are enhancements because I don't think there's any fraud, or any malfeasance, or anything like that, but these are just things that would improve the efficiencies to the county. And then, I noticed in the bidding documents, or in the actual fuel delivery, there, and this is something that the department shared with me, so it's not my finding, they volunteered, and they showed me all these invoices, and the deliveries sometimes said net delivered, or, sorry, net gallons, and some said gross gallons, there's actually a difference there, it's a price difference, and, and some of these theories behind that, they're only, the, the benefit to us for, for either version would only be there if the, the company that was delivering it was consistently billing us at that same type of fuel. So, part of the recommendation is that they look at these invoices every month and make sure that they're deliver, that they're charging us on one or the other consistently throughout the year, because you can get a benefit in one version or the other, depending on if it's cold weather or hot weather. And then, also to consider that in the, it's one factor, not the factor, but, but when deciding on when to buy fuel, looking at the, the prices, because sometimes they could be cyclical. And then, the bid documents to be updated, and the department has, in the back, they've responded, and they're in agreement, and they've put information regarding their progress and, in completing all these recommendations. And do I have, do you have any questions for me? Okay.
You had mentioned that there were some issues, such as information that needed to be completed, such as tank capacity, et cetera?
Yes.
That, that had not been, that had not been done, addressed, and, but it is something that the department is working on trying to improve?
Yes, so the purchasing department, there, there was a complete change over in staff. So, the person who's in charge now was not in charge when the former internal auditor made these recommendations before, and I think that knowledge sharing wasn't passed on between the, the former and the current purchasing department person.
Issues such as filling out VIN numbers?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Now, what about the, the system itself?
Well, the VIN numbers were in the system, there might have been one or two that had a typo, but, but the VIN numbers were in there, just the fuel capacity wasn't.
Okay, thanks. Where do you think we're headed as far as the, the WEX system is concerned? Because I know you said it was only adequate, and it probably should be better, that it's an automated system, so it should be more efficient, in your, your opinion?
So, there's a, there's a continuous audit on P cards, right? Because there, there's a high susceptibility to frauds and so forth. So, I think that the cards automatically are going to have that inherent, like, risky nature, because they could be used anywhere. As you could see in the report, they could be used in Delaware easily, they could be used at midnight, they could be used, you know, in regular working hours. And so, it's, it's something that we need to, in my opinion, have more controls for, because it's, it's more susceptible to risk and abuse. But I, I think that the department's working towards getting there with the management review. If management reviews these every month to make sure that the purchases are reasonable at the department level, then that would mitigate risk.
The, the logs, is that, that's, those are, that's when you're driving the vehicle? Like, you just write in the miles and the time and everything, and that's just not being done, is what you're saying?
Well, it, it is being done in, in some departments, and others, it's, it's not, like, I didn't really test to it, so I can't say that it's more or less in one particular department, but there were enough instances of people saying to me that they weren't doing it, that I didn't think it was worth it to actually test.
What's the purpose of the logs? I mean.
So, the, there's a, there's an IRS rule somewhere, and I don't, I didn't put it in the, the audit report, so I might not speak to this perfectly, but when people are, you know, doing tax things, that they, that they have these fuel records, these logs, and that, like, supports that usage, and I think that's where that, that original thought came from, with the county's reasoning for the fuel, because it's in their personnel manual, so, so any of the discussion that happened to decide to have, whatever the phrasing is that's in there, I'm not really sure, I can't really speak to that too much.
Yeah, that's fine.
We, we do have, I mean, there are receipts, there's transactions.
I got you.
For the fuel, but, but in terms of the log, yeah, could improve.
Yeah, I guess, I didn't see anything in here about DEF. D-E-F?
Yes, DEF. I, I didn't think that it was a material, it's, so DEF, it's, it's something, and, and they, they talked to me about it, we had lengthy discussion about it in, in one visit. It's a product that's put into the, the diesel fuel, into the, into the vehicle somehow to make sure that it doesn't, like, solidify in cold weather?
It's an, no, that's what it is. It's an anti-pollution.
Okay, anti-pollution, yeah.
And it's added, and your newer diesel, well, newer diesel vehicles have it, and I'm sure most of ours do now, but, you know, it's, it's quite expensive, and I think in the future, that needs to be looked at as far as the usage and, you know, comparisons, so.
I, I will include DEF in the next report, and, and I will be doing another audit next year. I'd like to get to the point that I'm doing these every other year, but until I have, until we have, like, two consistent satisfactory reports, I, I want to still do this every year. So, so next year, I will include DEF in.
It should be, it should be audited the same way as gasoline or diesel.
Okay, thank you.
I noticed that you had stated throughout the text that, that there should be either a fuel master upgrade, I guess with the current system, with the current vendor, or else we should look for a new fuel supply vendor?
Yes.
From reading this report, it looks like we should probably be looking for a new vendor. I was very concerned over the fact that there was such a, an imbalance in reference to how they were billing the county for either gross gallons or net gallon, or net gallons. This is a situation where I guess maybe a tanker could have a different series of gallons based simply on whether it's hot or cold weather?
Yes.
And that's the distinction between whether it's a gross or a net. And it appeared to me that there are enough instances in your, in your report that we weren't getting consistency in that.
That was what it looked like to me, and the, the part of their, the inconsistency to them might be that the confusion about what we're, what they were supposed to be doing, and I, I don't know, I, I don't want to get into talking negatively about specific vendors or not, but, but I know that the, the bidding documents have been updated, and they likely will, I mean, I, I can't speak for, for what the department's going to do in terms of bidding for future, but it definitely was, I agree with you, a, a serious concern about whether it was going to be net gallons. And so, hopefully, that'll be resolved for the future, and, and that's partly why we should have them, why they should look at the bills every month to make sure that it's correct.
Yeah, I, I, I thought it was very interesting that the whole read, and I think you really found a lot of inconsistencies that we certainly do need to look at, and maybe a whole entire change of plans in reference to the, to the vendors.
Yeah, and, and just to clarify, that there's, there's two different vendors here, one, the one that's delivering the fuel that, that, with the net gallons versus the gross, and then the other vendor is the one that the data gets uploaded to the system. So, for the Rhodes pumps, data, it's some sort of, like, the, the data just doesn't get uploaded, that's a different vendor than the one that actually delivers the fuel. But, yeah.
Either way, I think.
Either way, yes.
It's a very insightful report, or audit, I thought it was very valuable, in, with the information that you supplied. Any other questions? No? All those in favor of Resolution Number 40-2024, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any public comments you'd like to make, come to the podium, please state your name, your county of residence, and concern. Keep in mind, we're trying to stay within the three-minute limit.
Jim Atkins, Wycomico County. I want to talk about the volunteer firefighter's property tax exemption, and what's been going on with that. property tax exemption and what's been going on with that. A lot of hard work's been done by the council. Still a lot of questions, or some questions out there. And I decided to do a little bit of research after we've had the president of the auxiliary for Wycomico County speak to us. We've had the president of the Wycomico County Volunteer Firemen's Association speak to us. And we've had the administration tell us that what we're asking is not possible. If you go into the national, and Councilman Merritt has a forum there, passed out, National Volunteer Fire Council, Volunteer Responder Incentive Protection Act, House Resolution 1241 and Senate Resolution 1210. First paragraph states, "The Volunteer Responder Incentive Protection Act allows communities to provide volunteer firefighters and EMS personnel with property tax reductions and/or up to $600 per year of recruitment and retention incentives without these benefits being subject to federal income tax withholding." Okay? That's from that National Volunteer Firemen's Council. If you go to the second page, you have the legislative victory, which was passed on December the 21st of 2020. One of the four people who supported this bill was Maryland Senator Ben Cardin. They passed a permanent, the House and Senate passed a permanent extension of the Volunteer Responder Incentive Protection Act, which exempts nominal recruitment and retention benefits that volunteer emergency responders receive from being subject to federal income tax and reporting requirements. Okay? I'm not going to read the rest of the page to you. You can read that on your own time because we are trying to stick to three minutes. But I will go to the last page, if you would please, and you'll see a little asterisk there. The Volunteer Responders Incentive Program was originally enacted in 2007 and was in effect from 2008 through 2010, expiring in 2011. That version exempted property tax benefits and up to $30 a month of active service, or $360 per year, and other incentives. Last year, Congress reauthorized that act for the 2020 tax year, but it had been set to expire on December 31st. This version increased the maximum exemption on non-property tax benefits to $50 per month of active service, or $600 a year. House Resolution 133 retains the tax exemption on property tax benefits and up to $600 in other benefits. It's telling you right here that property tax credit is not taxable. It has been stated that the IRS guidelines say it is. Well, it's been a while since I was in high school, but, and they did teach civics back then. I think Congress tells the IRS what they can and can't do. And Congress is saying here that this property tax is done. The county executive has stated, as she has spoken to the Queen Anne's County Executive, well, I've been in contact with the Queen Anne's County Finance Director, and his response with me is that everything we are doing, we believe is above the law and above the table. He is the one that provided me with all this information. I guess, try not to get aggravated about it, but we've got an executive, a Director of Administration, an Assistant Director of Administration, a Director of Finance, and a whole finance department that wants to tell us that this is taxable. I sit home and spend about three hours total, and I come up with this information. It's non-taxable, folks. I've been in contact with Senator Cardin, asking him for a full definition of this bill and what the purpose of the bill was. But unfortunately, they're a little busy right now with a bridge in Baltimore. So I don't expect to hear from him in the next couple of days. But I don't want to say this isn't my job, but the people I just named in the executive branch, their salaries are $583,000 a year. To find the answers to these questions, it's not my job. But here's the answer. Thank you for everything that you've done to support it. Now maybe you can push the executive branch to support it a little bit more. And maybe the Volunteer Firemen's Association will realize that everything they're being told is not the way life is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins.
Thank you.
Good evening, Holly Ortell, President of the Wycomico County Fire Association. I want to thank you, and please, may I have a copy of that? Thank you. I want to thank you, gentlemen and lady, for all of your support with the Fire Association. It is greatly appreciated. I understand that we are fighting with the county executive and the Finance Committee about the tax credit with this 1099. I wholeheartedly believe what you're saying. I am fighting for it. I have been in contact with Congressman Andy Harris's office and Councilman Baker, Councilman Merritt, and Chief Twilley down at Willards. I need to get a letter written. He already knows what's going on, so I can get in there. I feel like I'm pulling tooth and nail. When I did my research, as a few of you councilmen know, and I contacted Queen Anne's County, Calvert County, Underrundell County, Calvert County was the first county in the state of Maryland to start the real estate tax credit, 2,500, no one else is giving a 1099. We're not employees of y'all, we're volunteers. When I contacted our county executive, she made a phone call to Queen Anne's County, and she brought my name into it. And she was like, well, you know, Holly Ortell said X, Y, Z, that you all aren't doing this. And she had the audacity to let them know that they are doing it wrong. She doesn't need to worry about Queen Anne's County, whether they're doing it right, wrong, or indifferent. That's nobody's business. Her business is here in Wycomico County. But I do thank you all for all of your support. I ask for your continued support. I appreciate all you councilmen coming out to our meetings every month. And hopefully at our next meeting, we'll be voting once to have it at 7:00 versus 7:30. So that'll be much better for all of us. And I hope to see you guys in fruitland. And I'll keep on fighting for this, tooth and nail, that we're not paying a $30 tax credit on, a tax credit. That's just silliness in my eyes. But thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ortell.
Hi, my name is James Dahlien, and I live on Shadow Lane in Delmar, Maryland. I'm a husband, father of five, Eagle Scout, software engineer, gaming, fishing, hiking, frisbee, and outdoor enjoyer. I'd like to briefly comment on two subjects. First, I've been participating in the Wycomico Clean Roadside Trash Cleanup Group the last couple of weeks. Mark Engberg and Bruce Robson have been doing a great job recruiting volunteers every weekend to clean up Wycomico. I urge the executive, council, and community to keep supporting this movement. Second, I'm here to voice my opposition to the Safari at the Quarry off-road events scheduled to be run at the Connolly Mill property this year and beyond. When I moved here about two years ago, my realtor said there is a park planned for the property nearby to my home. Now, after hearing about these events on Facebook, it prompted me to start reading through several minutes from open work sessions and meetings from this county. I found a long history of public discussion and engagement for turning this property into a recreational park. These Safari at the Quarry off-road events put a foot in the door and set to destroy this long-term plan. Where were the public hearings and community engagement on this change of plans? There are a lot of remarks about Safari at the Quarry being a one-time event, and there shouldn't be any concern. I disagree. Here's a few excerpts from the event's website and Facebook page that contradict such statements. We are going to build a community of 4x4 culture around this amazing facility. Please share this page and help to build our safari community, 274 acres of fun and 4x4 enjoyment. We are supportive of ATVs and will continue to work towards something that segment, for that segment of the community. The initial focus will be short-wheel-based vehicles. It's only just the beginning. This will be our first event at the Safari at the Quarry location, July to be announced, 2024, Open Wheeling at the Quarry, our second event. We are looking to have two to three this year. Please help restore the original intent of this property, save Connolly Mill Park. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dahlien.
Between the two of us, we'll be much less than six minutes. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the future of Connolly Mill Park.
Let us know who you are.
Oh, sorry. Mikel Dahlien, Shadow Hills. I'm here tonight to speak to you about the future of Connolly Mill Park. While the county grapples with the controversies surrounding the Safari at the Quarry events, I believe the most critical issue is being overlooked, the original vision for the park itself. This land was gifted to all Wycomico County residents, and the vision for Connolly Mill Park was clear. The county's own Natural Resource Conservation Advisory Committee, NRCAC, recreation parks and tourism, local groups, and many residents worked to shape a plan for low-impact uses like hiking, water sports, biking, and more. In 2017, the NRCAC explicitly stated their support for this vision in a letter to the county council and former county executive Bob Culver. Here is an excerpt from that letter. "Our committee has discussed the importance of this area in great detail, and we are very excited to have heard of the potential donation and acquisition of the property for the county. We would like for you to accept this letter as an understanding of full and complete support of the NRCAC for the proposed donation. Providing enjoyment and use of the property with a low-impact development plan would provide not only additional recreational opportunities for the county, but equally as important, protection for the paleoaquifer and the headwaters of the Wycomico River. Our committee is in full support of the acceptance of the property and willing and able to provide insight and recommendations on a responsible, low-impact use of the property. Ironically, the initial donation was delayed due to contamination. Later, environmental testing performed by Heinz and Associates revealed that the contamination most likely resulted from illegal ATV use, which is going on to this day every day. The county recognized the opportunity to mitigate the damage with a low-impact park. The original vision continues to be important. Connolly Mill is part of the Tri-County Council's comprehensive economic development strategy, listed as a project under their goal of vibrant communities from 2022 to 2024. This goal seeks to protect the environment while offering diverse recreation. The development of Connolly Mill Park has been included in every Wycomico County capital improvement program since its donation in 2019, promising multiple opportunities for public input and engagement regarding future plans for the property. Suddenly this year, Connolly Mill Park has disappeared from the CIP submitted by Madam Executive on December 19th, 2023, without any of the promised public input or engagement. Instead, the county executive has signed a deal with a private business granting them 90% of gross revenue, while the county would only receive 10% of net profits. That deal contradicts the NRCAC's advice, disregards the community-driven vision, and flies in the face of all previous discussions and decisions regarding the Connolly Mill property. The county executive claims this is only one event. However, the company's own website calls the event a venue launch and touts extensive plans for a 274-acre off-road park. Let me reiterate, Connolly Mill Park, a space envisioned for all residents to enjoy, is on the verge of becoming a playground for a select few, and all of this is happening without any public input. We must act now to protect the original vision. By following the recommendations of the NRCAC and fulfilling the goals outlined in the Tri-County Council strategy, we can create a park that serves the entire region. Let us stand together and ensure that Connolly Mill Park becomes a park for all, not a privilege for a few. Thank you." And this is my daughter, Fiona.
You just can't say your name.
No, just say your name.
Hello, Fiona.
Go ahead.
My name is Fiona, and I'm here to talk about how Safari at the Quarry has affected me. When I first moved here, I heard about a park that they were making, and I was very excited about it. I was very excited to hang out with my friends at a park. Now I have been hearing ATVs in my backyard all the time. They are loud and obnoxious, and I have no peace and quiet because of them. I am afraid that because of this, there will be no park. I know this is a beautiful place, and it would be sad if my dream of the park did not come true. Everybody deserves to enjoy this place.
Thank you. Good job, Fiona.
Future councilwoman.
Put that on her for the day.
I can't follow that act very easily, can I? Good evening, I'm Mike Goldberg. I reside in Delmar in the Shadow Hills subdivision. I'm speaking this evening in regard to the off-road vehicle events, Safari at the Quarry, to take place at the proposed Connolly Mill site in Delmar. As we're all aware, the county executive, Julie Giordano, single-handedly entered into a contract with LiveWire Media to stage multiple off-road vehicle events at the Connolly Mill property. And I do mean multiple events, as they were specifically provided for in the contract and are being widely advertised by LiveWire on social media. As we're also aware, this was done without public notice, without opportunity for public comment, and without the advice and consent of the county council. Equally as concerning, none of the appropriate due diligence was undertaken prior to executing the agreement to examine economic and financial impacts, county expenditures, traffic control, and fire safety issues, as well as environmental impacts. The contract itself is ridden with ambiguities, inequities, and legal pitfalls that place county taxpayers at a distinct disadvantage. Essentially, the county executive jumped without looking. The memorandum of understanding was not an arms-length contract, as the county executive has admitted to being long acquainted with LiveWire's principal, Brad Hoffman. Additionally, the terms of the contract are already being disregarded with the tacit approval of the county executive, including the unauthorized use of environmentally sensitive parcel 168. Every Wycomico County resident should find these circumstances to be deeply concerning. As others have revealed this evening, the off-road events also violate the long-intended use of the Connolly Mill property as a low-impact park that should be available to all area residents, not just to the selected few who pay substantial sums to LiveWire in order to participate. Ultimately, all Wycomico County residents and taxpayers have been kept in the dark and were completely disenfranchised from the process, particularly the most impacted stakeholders who live in the immediate area. It's disturbing that through a loophole in the county charter, the county executive is empowered to enter into contracts in such an injudicious manner. But I believe there are several avenues of legislative action available to the county council that will serve to rein in the county executive as necessary to prevent further misuse of her authority. One, while understanding that the county council cannot be overburdened with reviewing and approving the hundreds of contracts that are executed each year, please consider legislation that would require the council to approve all contracts other than those that involve the Civic Center. It's my understanding that most contracts are for the use of the Civic Center, and by excluding them from council approval, the potential burden should be significantly reduced. Since the Connolly Mill Park is purportedly exempt from Salisbury's zoning ordinance and perhaps nuisance ordinances when used for public events, please consider legislation that would limit use of the property to non-disruptive events, whether public or private, unless the county council approves. Also, please consider legislation that... Also, please consider legislation that would grant special status to the Connolly Mill Park site and any other specifically designated county-owned properties that have environmental or neighborhood concerns. This would deny the county executive the authority to enter into contracts or leases without the council's consent, thereby affording such properties and surrounding neighborhoods with the necessary protections. Additionally, we ask the county council to obtain a formal legal opinion from the council's attorney determining, one, whether the memorandum of understanding is interpreted to be a contract or instead a lease, and, two, whether the planned off-road events are considered to be a public use or a private use. We believe the answers to these questions must be settled prior to taking legislative action, as they will determine the applicability of city or county zoning codes, noise or nuisance ordinances, or other applicable codes and ordinances, and will provide some clarity as to the best paths forward. It has become clear that too much power has been vested in the office of the county executive under the current charter. No citizen of Wacomico County should be deprived of the quiet enjoyment of their homes or suffer diminishment of property values at the whim of a single individual who exercises power recklessly and without regard for the human consequences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg.
Good evening, I'm Heather Langford. First and foremost, I do want to thank you for the Wacomico cleanup. That's an effort that we're working with Mr. Enberg and Wacomico Clean, so I really appreciate that. I am only here to state some factual information as the engineer and to clarify a few items. I understand Shadow Hills' stance, but as the engineer and some of the regulatory items, I just do want to clarify a few things. I was looking through the petition and the website that was created. There were a few facts. Fact number one stated "public purpose." It is quoted, and I do believe there's a misconception of this phrase when it comes to the planning and zoning aspect. Maryland State Governing Zoning Decisions Regulatory Guidelines, per case law states, "And state and counties interchangeable. Where the state leases its property to a private organization for a public purpose, municipal zoning and permit laws cannot be imposed to regulate the use of the property. Public use is not synonymous with physical use or access by the general public." It is then stated that the public park development for the use of all citizens has been, therewith been terminated. To clarify, the sale of the property was outlined as "used for recreational purposes and to mine soil for use of the landfill. To terminate something, it must first exist. No public park development was designed after the approved sale in Resolution 2018-146." Fact number four mentions SEDS panel, and the executive Giordano sits on the SEDS committee. I respectfully would like to add that Mr. Cannon, Mr. Winn, Mr. Merritt, Ms. Shields, Mr. Baker, Mr. Holloway, Mr. Hastings, and Ms. Hurley are also on that committee, with four of the council members being voting members. Fact seven claims that Jeeps are driving off trails directly through natural tall grasses, home to many wildlife creatures. We've had three state authorities and one federal authority review this concern. All anonymous complaints were found to be in compliance. Additionally, the tall grass that is not on the trail is the grass within the LOD of the pit we have permitted. This area can be dug out for soils to use at the landfill, which would and or will require removal of the grass. Fact eight states that the flyer available on safariatthequarry.com states, quote, "We are expecting 400 to 500 vehicles, over 1,000 spectators/participants," end quote. This was found on the vendor page, as stated in, on the website. It is highlighting how many vehicles may be at the vendor zone, as headlined in the flyer. The vendor zone is not at Connolly Mill and is shown on, at the location on the flyer. The fact that Mr. Hoffman's company was one of the nation's most successful Jeep festivals with so many numbers of Jeeps has no bearing on this event, rather it shows how successful and drama-free his events are in these locations. Fact number 11 is an attempt to state that taxpayers' expenditures related to this event include personal hours, police support for traffic control, roll fencing, manpower, and equipment to assist with event setup, and marketing support. To date, the county has overestimated approximately $1,064 has been spent for the event by the county. Furthermore, due to anonymous complaints to local, state, and federal authorities, which was unwarranted and solidified compliance of the county, the county has had to spend man-hours, which was, which has led up to $2,000 in council meetings and adjustments that cost another $2,900 approximately, totaling near $5,000 for those who, for completing these items that were already done for the site's compliance. Yet the county was challenged by those who voiced these authorities and their unhappiness with the Jeep event and for it to be canceled. The county does not make the obstacle course, have rolled fencing, or do marketing support as claimed in the petition. This is all LiveWire Media financially supported. Next, there was mention of contaminants in soils after vehicles crawl through it. As jurisdictions noted in their findings, the trails are located in areas surrounded by uplands, not allowing for any discharge outside of the LOD. These same vehicles and those that do have modifications to exhausts and other items may also have contaminants on the roadways and driveways throughout all communities. A few clarifications on what was claimed to be egregious. I want to clarify that we are not an active mining site, and Emsa has noted there is no jurisdiction over the site because it does not qualify as one. Additionally, we have a mining exemption permit. The parcel is not landlocked, as stated. It does have a 50-foot right-of-way, which nullifies private property or public property. Hauling trucks utilize this road frequently, which also alleviates any concerns that fire vehicles and police cannot adequately access this site. No conflicts have arisen from calls we have made when trespassing has occurred between jurisdictional authorities. The petition noted hundreds of thousands of Jeeps having active recalls for engine fires. Ironically, there are multiple households within Shadow Hills that have Jeeps parked near the woods line. I get confused because in one hand, police can't make it back via the road, and valuable police time and effort is lost, and it is also noted that there is a long history of illegal access and use. In one instance, there's the want for more people there, and another, there's a desire for no people there. In one area, abuse of valuable police time and effort is noted, but county employees vesting time, meeting local, state, and federal authorities, some driving two and a half hours away, are not considered valuable and misused. I read the environmental concerns brought up per Maryland Maps on the website. Almost each claim of the concern also had Shadow Hills' community fall in the same concerning areas. This includes polystyrene wetlands, wetland buffer over the HOA stormwater easement, Maryland amphibian and reptile, nearly every parcel in Bionet Tier 5 significant for biodiversity conservation, targeted ecological areas, green infrastructure hub, and corridors, and more. Lastly, Shadow Hills' development was built on lots within the 100-year floodplain, cut down existing wood lines and forest conservations, but we allowed for economic development and growth within the county, and I hope we can do the same year. I have any documents that anybody would like to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langford.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Michelle Wright, and I live in Hepburn, Maryland, and this is probably going to be the shortest speech I've ever given at a county council meeting. But I just wanted to come and say thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for finding the money to keep Fruitland Primary School going. I understand it passed with a 4-3 vote, and I understand the discussion was about where the money was going to come from, and that caused some of the decisions to not pass unanimously, but I am very thankful that it is moving forward. And I wanted to thank publicly, because I don't give you that very often either, Sheriff Mike Lewis and the one that's on in the state's attorney's office, Jamie Dykes. They don't give enough recognition for what they do and what they have to put up with, and I just want to say thank you publicly to them as well. So, thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Good evening, everybody. I don't have anything prepared either, and we'll be as brief as possible. I think we could continue to debate back and forth with the county and with the residents forever. You know, the intent is well documented in eight years' worth of records, your records. Our community has pored over them and extracted tons and tons of minutes. You know, we feel pretty strongly of the intent of the donor, of whether it's restricted in the deed or not. The intent is there for what was supposed to be done with that. The removal of that property from the SEDS document with the Tri-County Council and the CIP is an enormous waste of time and resources of a lot of people. If we want to get down to like nickel and diming, who's done what, and $1,000 the county spent on this, I mean, if we tallied up the number of hours the people in this community have worked, and the jobs, the things they haven't done with their jobs, like, we could go on and on. You know, I think it's kind of ridiculous, and we're losing the point. The point is, there's a lot of documentation that that was intended and should have been a public park, right? It has been removed. I spoke to Mr. Padgeon myself, I understand. It was removed very recently, that it was proposed to be removed in October, and may be removed officially in January from the SEDS document, and that does coincide with, you know, the agendas of the executive to conduct these other events. We do feel it flies in the face of what the property was intended to be, and I think the council has mostly stood behind that. There's plenty to read if somebody wants, I suppose, to dig through like Mikel has done, and, you know, read all the documentation, there's lots of it out there, including the documentation that Heinz and Associates, I think, Mr. Smithers maybe even read that? Was that Mr. Smithers that read that at a council meeting, that Heinz and Associates believed that the contamination that existed was from 15 years of illegal and illicit ATV use? I didn't make that up, that came from your own minutes, okay? Why on earth we would even be considering repeating these events and concentrating them into short periods of time literally doesn't make any sense. Like, you own the property, you know it had contamination from that already. Somebody decided at some point it wasn't bad enough to accept the donation, but the first time around, it was rejected because it was a worry. Somebody decided it wasn't bad enough, now we're talking about repeating it over and over and over. And there are, there's tons of documents out there, if you want to read scientific papers about ATV parks and compaction of soil and contamination, I mean, we could take forever to do that, but the facts are, there's already facts on the record that this was a problem. Why would we even, why would we even conceive of allowing that and promoting it? You know, that's just, I'm, I'll leave that topic there because I, it is what it is. It doesn't make any sense to allow something like this to continue. You know, we respectfully ask that the MOU be canceled, that the events be terminated before further damage is done, because even if we say, "Let it happen, let's just see if it doesn't go well, we won't do it again," I don't think that's a good enough answer, okay? And if my teenager said that to me, I'd say, "Absolutely not. No." Like, the answer's definitely no. You know it's a problem when you have to say it that way. So, you know, if we want to reinstate the park later, there's already damage, there's further damage that's going to be done. You do one event out there, okay? And maybe Ms. Engineer and everybody can, we can argue about facts of how much contamination. You know there was contamination on the site from the ATVs and the motorcycles, and that's spread across a few vehicles out there over 15 years. You already have a bigger problem. Since they've advertised this, they're in our neighborhoods now, even yesterday. Somebody's got videos of the Jeeps driving through our neighborhood. Guess who comes running inside when my kids, it was Easter Sunday, I had to call the cops on Easter. Look, I like to be the quiet one in the room, not the loud one, but this has crossed the line. Like, Easter Sunday, I'm doing my Easter egg hunt. Guess what happens? There's raging ATVs, all so loud in the yard, my kids come running inside and say, "Mom, it sounds like they're coming in our yard today." So, you know, somebody has videos of seven of them just ripping and roaring back there, and so of course, do I want to call the cops and bother them on Sunday? No. Did we do it? Yes, because we're told, "Well, you should call, that way you can get it on the record, that's a problem." Fine, I'll do that, okay? Several other people already called before me. Cops come to my cul-de-sac. Here, I'm literally putting my Easter eggs out, and I've got the police in my driveway. Like, that looked great when my nieces and nephews pulled up, you know? And I couldn't change the timing, it is what it is. You know, the police officer came, County Sheriff Baker, you know, "I apologize for even having to call because I don't want to waste resources." But he said, "Please call us. This is such a problem, we want you to call every time." And he said to me, "I can't get back there. I can pull in, I can't get through the gate. All I can do is pull up. Sometimes they see us, sometimes they leave." He said, "We'd like to arrest people, but we can't, we can't access it." So, you know, it's a constant problem. It is increasing. The Jeeps circling our cul-de-sac and staring at our kids in the yard, you know, I bought my house with a big yard so my kids can play outside and have a great time and feel safe, not so I can have people stalking my yard trying to see if they can get to the pits now. And that is something that's been increasing since this advertising's going on. So, we just ask that you please, you know, see the benefit in standing up for what's right, what's been documented that should have happened, and take a stand on this. I don't know what has to happen, but we would like to see much further action than what we're seeing. And there are neighborhoods close to us that don't know any, have not been informed about this either, who are now being informed. Wood Creek has 304 homes, they are very nearby to this community as well. They have their HOA meeting tonight, they are discussing amongst the homeowners tonight the, this revelation that unfortunately, they also had no knowledge of. Does it impact them that they're next door? No. Does it impact the community because the park is for the benefit of all these people? Yes. You know, there are massive apartment buildings within minutes of that park. You have tons, thousands of kids in those apartments, people, older people who need a place to walk. That's what it's supposed to be for. That's why the Wacomico County, if I can get the Natural Resource Advisory Committee, wrote the letter they wrote endorsing that donation. And that is on the record, Mikel mentioned it. I think you can get further input from them at this point, you sought their input, or their input was sought along with ours at the time of the donation. We were approached and asked to endorse that the donation be accepted upon the understanding that this would be borrow pits and a public park. And now they're flying in our face and saying, "Sorry, that's just not what we're going to do." And we haven't even addressed the fact that the misleading information that continues to be presented, including at our last meeting, that this is just 200 Jeeps, that it's just one weekend. It is well documented in the MOU that this is an ongoing event. It is all over their websites that they want to build a facility out of this. The MOU states reasons for producing a series of events each year. The information is all there. We cannot just ignore it. Thank you.
Get her in. To the record, it is Holly Campbell. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Craig Stoffco, retired director of Department of Health for Somerset County, retired six years ago. I will try not to repeat anything that's already been said, it's kind of hard to do with same issues. One thing I think is worth mentioning anyway is that Wacomico County is the only county in Maryland without a state park. These discussions go back probably 10 years. I remember talking with Mayor Day about it, Tri-County Council, before this land became available, we were talking about where we could do it. So, it predates even the timeframe that's being addressed. One of the other things that I'm sure has raised my eyebrows, that this event, the proposed site, sits directly on top of our cleanest, if not our only, source of water. I would direct you to articles by Dr. Sukasa Uzama, A-Z-U-M-A, and articles written on science.com, among others, and they detail the effects of exhaust from automobiles and how they contaminate water and soil, in addition to, I'm not minimizing air pollution, but some of what they describe are the heavy particulate matter and volatile organic compounds that are too heavy to just float up in the air. They settle in the soil and get absorbed into, into our water system. On the DNR site, you can see where the elevation of that site is higher than the surrounding area, it exceeds 50 feet. And then less than, less than five miles downstream, the Pemberton area, it's one foot above sea level, so in less than five miles, it descends more than 50 feet. So, all the stuff going into that groundwater, and there's four streams that feed directly into the Wacomico River, add to the pollution, which, I was kind of appalled to see this because I thought it had been addressed. I saw this today. Googled "Wacomico River pollution." Without doing anything else, Wacomico River, boom. Wacomico River is- Kamiko River is mired in filth. Levels of fecal bacteria are at the highest levels ever recorded. Swimming is not safe due to contamination. I know there's only so much people can do, but this to me seems like such a huge step backwards. It's hard to believe it's even being considered. The last thing I'll say has to do with the MOU, having been a health officer for many years, I've written dozens of MOUs, I've signed hundreds, thousands. When I first saw this MOU, I, I thought it was a rough draft. Honestly, I thought it was a joke, but I thought it was a rough draft. When I realized it wasn't, I reviewed it and still amazed and contend that it's the most shabby piece of work I've ever seen in my life, but that notwithstanding, when you look at their own numbers, this MOU is set up so that one person is set to gain somewhere in the vicinity of $100,000, where I find it impossible that the county can, can break even on this, but I'll give them the benefit of the doubt, and so they do, the county gets zero. So, an MOU is set up where one individual is going to make 100 grand, the county gets nothing. As a health officer, I always operated under, if there's even the potential to be perceived conflict of interest, shut it down. Potential for perceived conflict of interest. And here we have a guy whose only qualification of using taxpayer-funded land and equipment is that he's longtime friends with the county executive. I just think that's absurd. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoffco. Any other public comments?
Good evening, Lisa Collier-Purnell, and I also reside in Shadow Hills. My comments will be brief, because I feel horrible, but I'm not contagious. But this just shows you how important this is to us, that we press out here, and to the young lady who came and talked about the resources, I promise you that we have taken leave from work. Those of us who work elsewhere, we have had to take leave to come together and try to stand together on this issue. I just want to tell you how deeply saddened I was on Resurrection Sunday to hear from Holly, and what she had to go through, and that she had to contact the Kamiko County Sheriff's Department. We don't have that type of activity in Shadow Hills. But just stop and think, as these events continue, more will become aware of that area, and we will continue to see that. And that's not what we want. I've been sitting here, and I'm not as technologically savvy as I'd like to think, but I hope that I'll be able to find it for the next public comment, or to share with each of you some comments from some of the individuals who plan to come. And they are so set back and put off by our comments and our disdain for what they're doing, that they have said that they're going to come through our development, and they're going to be making some noise. Well, we know that we'll contact you, Sheriff Lewis, and we're going to let them know. And what, what do we have to continue to enjoy the peace that we want in our neighborhoods that each of you have and every other Kamiko County citizen should have? That, that's horrible. So, we're, you know, we've been called, as you heard the last time. You know, I said I was going to be brief, but here I am with a mic, they tell me same thing about you, Sheriff Lewis, don't get in front of the mic with him. But here I am, and...
I love you too, Lisa.
Yeah. And really, we're not entitled, we're not bad citizens, we're not selfish, we just simply want what is best for the county, not just for Shadow Hills. And again, to hear, to see those posts on Facebook where they say that they're going to come through our development, and they're going to be raising hell, that, that really concerns us, because I'm at the beginning, and when you're looking, you look out the window, I see young children who are able to ride their bikes, who are able to be on their skateboards, who are walking with their dogs, young people, old people. We don't want that, and we really hope that something can be done, as we have asked, that this, this contract, this memorandum of understanding agreement, whatever it is, it can be canceled, it can be canceled, and we can start again. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Purnell. Any other public comments? Seeing, and that concludes public comments, council comments.
Josh?
You guys wait up. I'll let you go first, I'll go second.
Me go first, the woman. Hold on.
I'll go first.
I think that when people have comments, like the neighborhood, the county executive who signed the MOU should be here to hear it. I think that even if she didn't agree with the comments, she should have been here to listen to them. I think it's called respect for your county residents. I think it's a serious matter to the county and to the residents that live here or taxpayers. I do not agree with, with what's going on, because I have these motorcycles that raise up and coming through Jersey Road, it's like a racetrack. I understand the noise, I also understand the paleo channel, the importance of that. I'm surprised environmentalists haven't been here to protest that and contamination, and we talk about, you know, you see the ads on the paper about, was it Fort, what is it? Fort Le June or Camp Le June, the pollution in the water. We don't know what's going to happen 15, 10, 15 years from now with this kind of stuff. I remember that they did talk about, when I was on the city council, about a park, and then things change, but I think we need to respect the people that live in the community, not some outsider that doesn't live in the community. And I think that also, I made a comment about the bald eagles was endangered species, was then corrected by the county exec that it's off the list now, but however, it's protected by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act, the Ball and Golden Eagle Protection Act, and the Lacey Act, and it was declassified as endangered species in 2016. So, I'm not too far off, it's still something that you have to consider, the, the animals that are in this place, that you're going to scare them half to death, you're going to run into people's yards, or you don't know if they're rabid animals or what, but there's, you're going to mess with their environment when you bring these people. And I guarantee you that there's going to be 1,000 people or more at this event. And I guarantee you, Chief, you're going to be busy that day, I guarantee you, because people are not going to follow rules and regulations. And it should be some kind of way that we should secure that place so nobody can get in it at this time. It should be a fence or something put around this particular stuff so the people cannot get in anytime, because it's not what it's for. Now, if it becomes a park, that's something different, but right now, it should be some kind of secure place so people cannot come and use their ATVs and whatever else they use, drive motorcycles, whatever, to disturb this community. And as I said at the last meeting, if I could vote, I would vote to cancel the event, if we could, if we could do that. And if we find a way, maybe that we can, you know, I don't know, but I would support counseling, my personal opinion.
Yeah, just three things I wanted to bring up. First of all, just on the Safari at the Quarry, I second that, if we could cancel the event, I certainly think we should. I am, one of the very first votes I took as a council member was to accept this property, and then to have it be, or to be used, to use that property for, they were going to pull soil off of it, and then it was becoming, going to become a park. So, that's what we were planning for, that's always, so, this whole other use is, is completely foreign to that. I'm also on the, I am, I do serve on the Natural Resources Conservation Advisory Committee, and we actually have a meeting on Tuesday, we are going to discuss it a little further, because those folks feel very strongly, you know, they intentionally went out of their way to support that property for that reason, and that was with Mr. Culver, County Sheriff Culver, before he passed. So, I think we should honor the original intent, that's where we should go on that. And yes, if there's a way that we can stop anything currently, I think we should. On the, I did want to point out two other things, the cleanup, there's a couple, multiple folks in, you have, thank you all for being here too, who have been involved with the cleanups around the county. There's been multiple individuals who have said, we need to make sure that we are helping provide the citizens who want to, to clean up a particular street neighborhood that they are doing so, and that they're safe, and that they're supported, you know, and then furthermore, that we put signs out in the areas that are the biggest, you know, the biggest problem areas. I think we, I don't know how we are addressing that in the budget, or thinking through that a little bit more, but I definitely think that we should put a very concerted efforts to try to get to, especially those targeted dumping zones, because there's, there's far too many of us that are out there that are trying to do our part to, 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 to clean, but there's, you know, there's just too many, there's a lot of roads in Kamiko County, and pardon me, far too few of us that are able to do all that. And last thing I just want to bring up, it was mentioned, of course, the Fruitland, the vote, I don't know if Mr., if the folks are still here, but that was, Ms. Michelle Wright mentioned that that was a four-three vote, that was just on the amendment, it was a six-one vote, or, you know, we did have a lot of good discussion about Fruitland, trying to make sure that that school can still move forward, and that we're doing it judiciously in the right way. The question was, how is it funded, and how is it paid for? I'll pause there. Thank you.
Shane.
So, talking about the Safari at the Quarry, I think it's time, Mr. President, if we can get it on the agenda, to see if we can do legislation which, where the council can govern county property, and what, what events can take place on county property. But there's been so much public outcry, we need to, we need to at least entertain it.
Do that.
I want to thank Mr. Atkins for all his information. He calls me, he texts me, he emails me. Sometimes I don't respond like I should, but he still gives me a lot of information, and I appreciate it, and thank you for coming and helping us out. I think the Safari at the Quarry could have been, could have been, a good thing if it was handled appropriately, but it has just spun so out of control with lack of information, lack of public support, lack of a lot of things, that at this point, you know, I agree with the other councilmen, that I would vote to cancel it as well. It's just, you know, there's been, it's 10 to 1 the public outcry against it than for it. I've had a few, maybe two, three, calls for it, the rest have been against it.
Hundred to one.
Yeah, yeah, maybe even higher than that, but it, it's time that we do what we can do to address this as a council body. And I want to thank Holly for coming out. Thank you for coming out. That's all I got.
So, I'm going to break tradition, I'm not going to talk about the Safari, yet. I do want to recognize Lee Outen, who retired this week, he was our Superintendent of Roads over at Public Works. He literally knows every square inch of the 700 miles of roads that we have in this county, so he will definitely be missed, and we wish him well on his next adventure. I want to recognize Bruce Robson and Mark Engberg, the two guys that have spearheaded this cleanup effort. I do speak daily with them, and there will be signs out on the next project. They're being designed right now, as a matter of fact.
Hope you're not paying for them, Jeff.
Moving on. And I want to thank our city and county partners. Mr. Swabe, thank you. City of Salisbury, this is really a team effort. We, we had 20 people out on Johnson Road and Airport Road area on Saturday. We picked up, there were so many people, we had to divide into three groups and go in different directions. We, and Jennifer Albero, she calculates everything for us. We picked up 1,650 pounds of trash in, in less than two hours. The area that I cleaned up, the winners were White Claw and Yingling. But in all seriousness, cans, bottles, fast food wrappers, mattresses, tires, furniture, carpet, you name it. We had a huge pile at the end. More people are getting involved, the weather's warming up, not as fast as we like, but I told Bruce and Mark today, we need to take advantage of the next six or seven months of warm weather, and try and get some people out, and, and work on getting these roads cleaned up. Public Works is coming around, picking up what we collect on Monday, so that we don't have to take it to the landfill. And again, shout out to the, Mikel and her family, had the pleasure of working with them on, on Saturday, that, that was fun. Shadow Hills, too, too many red flags to list. I'm not going to go over everything that's already said, from the MOU, lack of transparency, lack of inclusion in the discussion, it's just got red flags everywhere. And I hate to disagree with you, but the property is secure, we just heard that the Sheriff's Department couldn't get in there on Easter Sunday.
He might not know a way to get in there.
Hey, I don't want to be called.
They were called out, the Sheriff's Department was called out there twice over the weekend, by the way. So, and this property was known maybe to a few hundred people prior to all this, and thanks to the media and social media, now it, thousands of people are aware of this property, so, you know, let your imagination figure that one out. I think that's all I got. Thank you.
I could say just for the record, we did respond out there to the President's warning, we did.
Michael, you would want to use, you'd want to use that voting comment.
We did have an opportunity, Sheriff Mike Lewis, we did have an opportunity to confront two of the lawless thugs on these ATVs, and they fled on us. We did catch one up in Sharp Town at the gas pump, and we seized his ATV and we took it from him, we towed it, and we charged him accordingly. And, and that apprehension was made by Deputy Nick Accree, and if you know Nick Accree, he's a monster, you're not going to get away from him. And he managed to grab the kid while he was at the gas pump, while he was gassing up his ATV. But we snatched it, we had it towed, and, and he was charged accordingly. I can tell you, I, while I'm up here, I was never asked to support this event, because I don't support the event. I don't. I've never, I don't. And I was never asked my opinion about having this event. I'm saying this because I've been told that, in comments made to this group, that I supported this event. Is that true?
Yes.
Well, let me make one thing perfectly clear. I have never been involved in any discussion ever, other than being told it was going to happen, and we'll keep you posted.
That's all she does.
My, my opinion was never sought, I don't support it, but I promise you this, there will be deputies, additional deputies, that are going to be paid to work that day in Shadow Hills to protect your development. I promise you that. I promise you that. They will be in Shadow Hills to protect your development. I will promise you that. But I was here for the last public comments, I'm here for these public comments, and quite frankly, I hurt for you guys, because I want one in my backyard. And when I saw my resources being sent out there this weekend, I was frustrated for each of you sitting in this room. Because I can only imagine, on Resurrection Day, on Easter, having to deal with all that noise in your backyard, and, and having to deal with all the comments being made by this group on social media. And I apologize for that, but we will protect you, we will be in your neighborhood on those dates, and we'll hold those accountable. That's all I can do.
Two big, the two subjects tonight, I guess, the Shadow Hills and then the tax credit. I understand how the fire service is upset about having to pay taxes on the $1,500, and I don't see why... And I don't see why we can't get a ruling from the IRS through our finance, and maybe there should be a letter sent to our finance director asking, I'm sure the IRS answers those kind of questions all the time, not necessarily about the fire service, but questions about what people have to pay taxes on. So I think that's what we need to do. We need to ask the, we can't tell them to do that, we can only ask that they would send a letter to the IRS and get a ruling, and we'll have to live by that. And unfortunately, if it, if it's the way that we've been told, unfortunately, that's the way it's going to have to be. Shadow Hills, you know, we've all had our say about it. I talked to our council attorney today, and I talked to Laura and Mr. Cannon, and I think that unfortunately, government a lot of times has, reacts to things that isn't right, and that's when, if you look at Annapolis and all the laws that gets passed up there, the legislation, it's done after something has happened, not to prevent something. So hopefully, Mr. Cannon, I know Mr. Baker mentioned it, we can either have a work session or we can talk to our, our legal and come up with some kind of solution, whether we can do something to prevent this from happening or something to keep it from happening in the future. I would support that, so we'll see what goes. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I hope everyone had a, a great Easter. I mean, we can't forget about that resurrection Sunday. Solar eclipse is coming, it's a pretty big deal, I hope everyone's got their glasses. I think that's a great idea, Joe, to look into the, what our finance can do for the 1099, and it's just, it's just something we need to work on, so. Let you, let you have it.
Sure. Under presidential comments, I'd also like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I'm always surprised as to how well everybody can, well, everybody speaks. It's not an easy thing to get up in public and to speak, and a very articulate group we have here. Fiona, that includes you. Very well done. Councilman Baker and Holloway, we will get this on the agenda to see what the council needs to do in order to, to tighten up the restrictions on the use of property in Wycomico County. I think that's important, that we look into that. As Joe said, things happen and all of a sudden you realize maybe where adjustments have to be made, and this is obviously where an adjustment has to be made. I had one curious issue where, when Councilman Merritt mentioned the White Claw, I wasn't sure whether it was Sheriff Lewis or Madam State's Attorney that maybe had thrown that can out there, because you were both pointing fingers at each other.
I understood that was the route she took home.
Certainly not.
It was the route she took home. Thank you, Sheriff. We didn't, I want to make sure we had that on the record. Outside of that, Jeff, I couldn't agree more with, with Lee Outen as an employee of Wycomico County. He was a leader, he's also worked on the council of the city Fruitland, as you know, and I will never forget the day we had one of our 10-year storms, right after the year before we had another 10-year storm. And I was driving down Pemberton Drive, and I, I thought I saw someone in the ditch, so I thought, well, maybe I better try to turn around. Well, it was Lee, and he was actually working in the ditch. He wa, he hadn't fallen, he was working in the ditch, and that's the kind of person he was. He not only was a leader with, with his, with his people, but he also got out and literally in the trenches and did the work, and has always been an excellent guy to work with. We're going to miss him a lot. As a point of clarification, this will be all I'll say, two things. One is, we will talk to the legislative assistant for Ben Cardin and see if we can't get her to get, get us some very specific issues in regard to the fire department's tax issues. They're usually very helpful with that type of thing. In regard to a couple of points made here earlier, I did check, there was the fiscal year '24 through '28 CIP, the Connolly Mill project was in there. It was scheduled for about $100,000. That was actually scheduled to be expended in 2027. So that was the '24 CIP. And it was monies that were going to come out of what they call Pega, sort of the operating budget. As of this year, as you know, it was dropped completely. So it wasn't in there for any years whatsoever. So that being the case, when I attended the, the tri-county council meeting and we were finalizing the documents for what they call the SEDS documents, it's a comprehensive economic development strategy document, that's a long-term plan for the tri-county area. I did inform them, I said, well, I need you to know, you have it listed, but you, you're going to want to take it off, because I don't see it right now being planned for the next five years. So that's why it's been removed from the SEDS document, but we can certainly add it in next year with just the stroke of a pen. I just wanted to make you aware of that clarification. So, that being said, I have to adjourn, right? Entertaining motion to adjourn from legislative session to go into open work sessions, followed by two closed work sessions pursuant to the general provisions article, section 3-305 B3, for the state's attorney and Department of Public Works to consider the acquisition of real property for a purpose, public purpose, and matters directly related thereto to protect the county's bargaining power. Motion.
No move.
Second.
All's in favor.
Legislative meeting is adjourned. We reconvene as the Wycomico County Council in legislative session 2024-07 for April 2, 2024. The first item we have on the open work session is proposed changes to the Wycomico County Personnel Manual, Chapter 24, titled Workers' Compensation. Mrs. Donna O'Hara, Human Resources Director, is here, as well as Sheriff Mike Lewis.
Hopefully my partner in crime is coming. Not in crime. Good evening, I'm Donna O'Hara, Director of Human Resources for Wycomico County, and hopefully Sheriff Lewis is going to be joining me for this particular part. Just as an introduction, we have had multiple requests from employees who are out on workers' comp due to injuries sustained on the job to try to help them work through their time out for more extensive injuries. Typically, it, this is not the case, but there have been a couple of circumstances, especially within the corrections and law enforcement departments, where their injuries are more severe and it takes a longer time for them to heal. And we are just coming on their behalf, to speak on their behalf, to ask for, what we currently do is, for the first 30 days, we continue their pay as is, and then we reduce by however much the worker's comp check is, we reduce that amount so we can continue to take their health insurance, their pension, and all those, those types of things out for them while they heal. Again, most of the time, by three months, these individuals are back to work. So we picked a 90-day to extend it to from the 30, to try to help them a little bit longer. I did provide some data on what a typical person's, what, what one of these individuals, I've made some similar numbers, but obviously not to identify a particular individual as far as what it would look like. And I don't, I didn't see this in the brief book, but I can certainly provide a copy of what, what it looks like after a 14-week period of time for someone like that, if we're not taking those deductions out throughout that time period, what it looks like for them when they come back to work and have to owe money back on some of those deductions. But I would like to thank Sheriff Lewis for joining me tonight and taking time out of his busy schedule to help me present this and to just share any thoughts he has as someone who is in the department that is severely affected by this sometimes and may have a longer-term injury.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sheriff Mike Lewis, on behalf of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, let me say this, I've been sheriff in this county now going on 18 years, and this is a document that is well overdue. Our HR Director, Ms. Donna O'Hara, you have done a masterful job assembling this, and I've met with my command staff, and we all agree, this streamlines everything, not only for our employees, but for the administrators and, and the command staff who have to deal with these issues every single day. And everything you've done here, you've just done a wonderful job, and I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
You've done a great job with this. Thank you very much. I fully support this. We've been needing this for a long time. It is a much-needed revision, and it's comprehensive, it covers everything. I've looked at the summary that was presented to me a couple of weeks ago, and the document itself, and masterful job, job well done, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I mean that. Great job.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any comments, questions from council?
Looking at some of the other counties, it looks like we're kind of behind the curve.
We are a little bit, yeah. Especially with law enforcement and corrections who are at much higher risk just because of the nature of their job, that they get injured more often, not to their own negligence or anything else, it's just the nature of the job.
This is for all the departments, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
It is.
Okay.
But it really addresses the needs that, that we have needed for a long time within the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office, and I just thank her so much for this, because this is, this is overdue and it's much needed, so thank you again.
Sure. And then roads, solid waste, those are also high-risk departments, not because of anything that anybody does wrong, but just the nature of the job. Heavy equipment, land shifting and things like that, you just really never know what's going to happen and how long the recovery is going to be, so.
Yeah, I think, I would say, I would echo what the sheriff said, too. I think it's been well done, very well prepared. I know that Vice President Merritt and I sat with Mrs. Hurley during our agenda meeting, and she's really very knowledgeable on a lot of personnel matters in Wycomico County with a lot of history and knowledge, and we went through it for, for about, I'd say about, about 20 minutes, and I, I think it is, as you said, Sheriff, I think it's very much needed for a long time, and I'm, I'm glad to see we're taking that initiative.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate it.
Is council as a whole okay with moving forward as is? Okay, we're good. Sheriff, thank you again.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
So our next step would be to present a resolution to you for that.
Yeah, it's going to require a public hearing. But it only requires one week of advertising, so we can have that the next meeting.
Okay.
April the 16th.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Great work. Next item we have on the agenda, administrative leave for county employees serving as election judges.
Yes, and I'm going to let her steal the show on this one.
Just stating the name as church for the public.
Good evening, my name is Deion Church, Election Director for Wycomico Board of Elections.
Glad to have you here.
Thank you. So I was recently talking with the county executive, M. Bunky, in regards to the election law for election judges for the state of Maryland, for people that serve as election judges currently under election law 10202. State employees receive one hour of administrative leave for each hour served as an election judge, up to a total of eight hours. So I wanted to come before you all today to see if you would honor that for our county employees. One of the reasons why they do it for state employees is, of course, to encourage people to be judges, and just because the importance of serving that day is good, and just giving back their time. And currently, there is a bill, and I think A.K. told you that in her letter at the General Assembly HB 700, where they're trying to pass it statewide for each county, where not only the state employees would get reimbursed, but county employees would also. So my goal is to get ahead of that. If the bill is passed, it won't go into effect until actually June the 1st.
Okay.
So I'm just asking that you all would consider doing that, even if the bill doesn't pass, I just think it's a nice thing to do for county employees, and it will also encourage other employees to participate in serving as an election judge.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, yeah. John?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Joe.
Mr. Church, have you had, have you had reluctance immense people to volunteer to be election judges? How's, how does that?
We don't have as much of a problem here on the shore. The problem is really on the western shore. Our major issue is just making sure that we have bipartisan teams and putting people in the right places. So we get the judges, it's a matter of being able to diversify and make sure that everything is bipartisan. So sometimes we don't always have the balance of numbers that we want, that's what makes the job hard here on the shore.
So will, in this situation, will you strive toward being bipartisan even with county employees?
Definitely. Yes.
Now, I mentioned this to Anthony when he was there. Have you ever considered cutting the judge, judges' hours back to a half a day, if they wanted it that way? The complaints I've heard from people that have been judges, that's their biggest complaint, the day is so long, what is it, from like 6:00 in the morning to 9:00 at night?
It is a very long day for our judges.
Some of them might want to do that long of a day, but you might have better luck getting judges if you split the day. I just wondered.
We do have some people that don't work all day, we harm through an outside agency to do different jobs, but our actual judges, we just have not been able to hire enough people to be able to do the split shifts. We tried it in some areas, like our greeters, where you find people that are greeting our citizens as they come in. Our greeters do split shifts, and people that help with the equipment do split shifts. So we've tried a number of different things, and people seem to be happy with it, it's just hiring enough people to cover those spots. Currently, we have about 375 people that we hire just to do the election, so it's just a matter of us getting enough people to be able to do that. But it is a great idea.
I think so, too, Jeff.
Yes.
I think it's a very good idea.
Yes.
And promote it, you know, like, you know, work what you want, six or eight, however it has to be, or 10, yeah.
And I'll tell you, we are doing something different this year. We're doing something called election, I know we're getting a little off topic, but just to kind of let you know, we're doing a program called Election Page Program, where we're letting students come in to earn service hours, and they're working four hours. We're also trying a program with 16-year-olds this year. So we are trying to get a lot of diversity in there to help with that, and we might go back to Pollockton, maybe one or two polling places, just to try that. So that's something that I'll look into doing, and I'll let you know what happens.
Counsel, okay, moving forward.
Yeah, I got a quick question. Jury, I don't know which one of you can answer this, is the county employees paid for jury duty? Aren't they paid administrative leave?
They, they, they are, yeah.
So, I mean, outside of the fact that one's a volunteer position and one's, one's not.
Oh, I apologize, I'm sorry about that. Didn't have the manual open.
So, so they're, they're not for jury duty?
They take, yeah.
$25 a day. Yeah.
I'm not sure what, because payroll is now not with HR anymore, so.
Sorry.
I haven't had that opportunity, that's okay.
I know they're paid the $30.
Right.
Hi, Sandra Wallace, Dispersion Manager. For jury duty, they are not. So what happens is they're paid their normal everyday wage, so for the amount of hours that they're gone. So if they leave, you know, say at 8:00 a.m. they have to report, they come back at 2:00, they must mandatory, they must report back to work to finish out their shift, but no. And then they get to, to keep their jury duty pays as well, whatever they receive.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Everybody okay?
But they don't have, I just want to make sure I was clear, they don't have to use leave?
No, we do not use leave. No, they get paid their normal, their normal day. So it's as if they work that day, but we code it under a different code.
Okay. I thought, sorry, I wasn't completely.
Coming back?
Yeah. Like, I think we, we still pay them through the day, yeah.
Any other questions now? Where would we, how would we go about this?
It would just be a resolution that would be put forward by legal, and then you would approve it.
Yeah, because our judges, you know, do get paid. So I think Laura and I were talking, and it's something similar to what you do with blood there.
It would be like blood donation.
Okay, okay, okay.
So, yeah, it would come back as a resolution and a public hearing as well, and we can do that the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hurley.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to be sick of saying me, because I'm.
Next item on the agenda is the proposed additional holiday schedule for 2024.
This is follow-up to when the county executive had proposed both July 5th and December 24th, and the council had asked me to check to see what was going on in other counties, and I provided a spreadsheet of all the other counties that I was able to get information from. I apologize, very small font. But basically, in almost every area, we are kind of behind in, in as far as leave time. I did a, a separate little analysis of just our personal days and our annual leave, and we're, we're at the bottom on that as well. So I think maybe it was a, maybe a way to give a little bit back, and it wouldn't be anything that would be in the Personnel Manual, that it's always going to be Christmas Eve. I think the intent, and I don't want to speak on the county executive's behalf, but I think the intent was just to take it year by year and to come in front of council and ask each time. There was a discussion about. There was a discussion about floating holidays, and I did talk about, talked to the other counties about that, and that seemed to be a bad idea. It seemed like it was abandoned in almost every county, and instead, what they did was give a couple of extra personal days. Instead, it seemed like logistically, the floating holidays just was a nightmare for them to keep track of and try to logistically deal with, so.
Any questions, comments?
So, it sounds like the personal leave is the way to go, or?
Well, this, I think this is basically addressing the fact that the county executive still was asking for Christmas Eve of this year only to have off, so I'm just here...
Just Christmas Eve?
Yes, not July 5th. I think she abandoned that one, so.
Shane, or Jeff? Go ahead.
So, my thought is...
Get close to that mic.
My thought is to do two personal days. I mean, I hate to see her abandon the one idea. I didn't like the idea. I didn't think it should be that date. I think give them two extra personal days that they can use whenever they want to use them.
And put that in the Personnel Manual, instead of two personal days, have four personal days? Okay.
Yep. I mean, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't know why we're thinking about shutting the government down. We're here to serve the people of the county, and I understand it's Christmas Eve. If an employee wants to take off, then they just schedule it off. It shouldn't be that big a deal, but I don't think we should shut the government down outside of the holidays that we already have. I'd be in favor of the two personal days, and looking at this, thank you for this spreadsheet, because it looks like we're a little light on sick days, too.
Our accruals are behind as well, so as we move through the Personnel Manual further down the road, we can talk about that then, but we are behind on our accruals. I don't know when the last time our accrual rate was updated, but we are pretty low.
Definitely two personal days, yeah.
Just, I guess I'm looking at what was provided to council in the page. I don't know if you have that, I guess, the two charts. So, I'm just trying to understand, is the two days for the personal leaves, is that what we, is that what?
We only have two right now.
Currently, just two?
Yeah, and the only other entity that only has two is the city of Salisbury, but there are accruals in other areas, plus they work from 8:30 to 4:30 and get paid for full days and things like that, so, yeah.
Yeah, and I guess the only, I mean, I've said this before, just the other comments. I think most other jurisdictions, most other nonprofits, for-profits, everyone's kind of moving away from the picking a religious holiday to make that the day that someone has to take off.
Right, correct.
The more that we can have something that's, you know, assuming you don't celebrate Christmas or whatever, you know. So, yeah, the more that we can move in that direction, the better. So, I personally, I feel the same way. If we can do just a general day, well, I mean, it don't have to be a floating holiday or whatever you want to call it, but a personal day or something like that, I think makes the most sense.
I agree with the two personal days, but the only problem with that is next year, they'll forget about that and come back and want the holidays off, too. But for now, I guess we can go with the two personal days.
I've learned that you can't make everybody happy all the time in the last year.
Pardon me, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, I've learned that you can't make everybody happy all the time. You just do the best you can.
I think the general consensus is that we do not want to see the December 24th listed as another holiday. Stay with the schedule that we have, but we would like you to consider adding two more personal days.
Understood, okay.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Is two, like, average among all?
No, actually...
Or average among all the counties?
Actually, it's more like five or six.
Okay.
For the counties that border our county?
Yeah.
They get six.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Start with four.
We'll start with four counties. We'll start with four this year.
And then, Joe, when they come, we can make it six.
And then, next year, we would...
Then I got to rewrite that chapter. I'll leave it like...
But you also, too, have to look at, when you're thinking about this stuff, look at the total package of other benefits that this county may offer that other counties do not.
And that's why I tried to make sure that I encompassed all the time off as best I could. And you're correct, we have a great pension plan. We have a 457B with a matching...
With a 20% match.
Yeah, that's unheard of.
That's pretty good.
So, somewhere in the middle of the highest and the lowest, you know, is probably somewhere to shoot for, you know.
We're getting 100% more, so.
Right.
Two more days.
Yeah, and last comment, I just think the more that we can move away from also those 0 to 5, you know, zero to five years of service, you know, was this, 10 days or 12 days for, you know, and then...
That's a cruel, well, that's annual leave, so that would keep, yeah.
Annual leave in general, that's really what, I mean, from what I understood, the, you know, millennial generation and younger now just tend to, from all the trends that I've seen...
They want more time off.
That's all people. They really, yeah, they care more about the time off than the salary, the ability, so. And it looks a bit, you know, and then the less complicated we can make it. And also, on that note, you really want to have a high amount, because you want to be able to get the right people in the door. If someone said, if we can't hire someone because it's their first year, and they're like, they look down, they say, oh, you're only getting 10 days of accrued leave or whatever, like, I don't want to go work there.
Right. Especially if they're leaving a place where they've had three or four weeks.
Yeah.
And you really want a good employee, yeah.
Yeah, really, the update there, that really kind of concerns me, and just that 0 to 5 part. I want us to be a place where people want to come work and not, I don't want to give anyone a single reason to be able to say, oh, I don't want to go work there.
Agreed.
Usually, it's because they're glad to have a job. That's old school, though.
Wait till a recession, then.
A little bit of a different world these days.
All right, we have a consensus there, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Personnel Manual, chapters 1 through 3. This is a bit of a load, but I think we can move quickly enough with it. We'll let you take the lead on this.
Okay. As you all know, the original manual, I think, was written in 2003, and really, the only updates that cause it to be the August 2010 were any legislative bills and resolutions from what I've been able to gather from the different versions that I was able to find and work with. So, really, over these decades that have come to pass, any updates in laws and just our policies and our procedures that have just moved forward have not been updated in the manual, and the longer we go without having those things updated, the higher our risk of some type of repercussions as far as lawsuits and things like that. So, and a lot of things in the whole manual were spoke of in three or four different chapters, and so if you weren't, didn't know to flip back and forth, you, as an employee, you may have a piece of information about a particular policy, but not the whole picture, and you may not be compliant in the policy, not have any idea, because everything was kind of all over the place. So, my goal was to get all of the information on each different part of working for the county in the same chapter, in the same vicinity, so that when somebody reads it, they actually have a full picture of what that policy is. So, with that said, we, this is a rough draft, and I'm all ears for anything that you've read or have any suggestions on. The best thing I found was for me to go ahead and just do a summary of each chapter that I revised, because if I had given you a red-line draft, your head would have exploded, and it would have been like a 500, 600, 700 or page document.
And I think the council has had the opportunity to review the summary. We appreciate that. It's been, it is in the brief book.
Okay.
Any questions in regard to some of the items? I would ask, first of all, is, are we considering like an employee portal? I know that we've done that before, where the employees can actually sign on and ask a question or at least share their opinion. It's something we've done before. You may want to check maybe with IT or...
So, we did talk to, actually, a meeting with the internal auditor for our HR thing, and actually, we are going to talk to IT about having a place where they can send it directly to us for, whether it's a complaint or just a question. The portal does, the employee self-service does have a drop-down menu that has the entire manual, it has a lot of their, most of their forms that they need, it has copies of all of their health insurance policies, disability policies and everything there, and I have a fairly fresh new team that is really doing a really good job of educating the employees when we do orientation now. We've revamped the orientation and trying to really make sure that we do a good job with that, so.
Okay, all right. Another question I had, and I'm trying, I'll just try to go through it in chronological order under the State's Attorney's Office in Chapter 1. You mentioned leave accrual, and I was wondering whether or not, does leave accrual for attorneys, does that include vacation, sick and personal time?
So, I'm going to, for the State's Attorney's Office, they...
She may just be out.
She...
She's right there.
Nope, nope.
I'll be honest with you, I took exactly what was there before that was agreed upon, and...
If you don't have the answer, you can certainly give it to us later, okay? Because we're putting you in the spot. The question was whether or not leave accrual for attorneys included vacation, sick and personal time.
So, it doesn't, to the best of my knowledge. Attorneys have always been treated differently because they're at will, but I will, I prefer to look at this and kind of get back.
I just got that one for you.
Come on down, Sandra.
That's twice.
That's why they're here.
No kidding.
I can't do it by myself.
As far as accruals go for states attorney, states attorneys themselves, they do not earn anything. What we do is we do have them random, and there's somewhere that states after so many years, they get 40 hours of vacation. So, they get paid out that 40 hours of vacation, they do not use that 40 hours of vacation, and I want to say it's four years of service. And then it increases again, I think, at eight years of service, I think, but I'd have to go look that up.
I have, I have it, of course, at the office, but I don't have it handy on my phone to access. Yes. And they're all working more than 40 hours a week. Most of them are working more than 60 hours a week, and most of them don't take vacation. So, it's, yeah, it's a tough job. It's a tough job that they have, but we, it's, as I understand it, the history lends to, it's just what we've never done because they're at will and afforded some flexibility that way.
I have a question. When you say that they work 60 hours a week, is that...
They don't get paid their salary, their salary, they don't get...
Do they get comp time at all?
They are technically the only salaried employees the county has, other than your elected official.
You don't get a comp time and you work them 60 hours?
No.
Was that against the fair labor laws, that you worked them 60 hours?
I don't believe so, no.
Could you check that out for me?
We can.
Please, thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Of course.
The, in Section 110, Departmental Standard Operating Procedures?
Sure.
You're talking about the relationship between administration and the department heads. I'm wondering whether or not there shouldn't be something included there as well referencing the county council?
Okay.
And the internal auditor as well?
Okay.
And we can give it to you in written form at some point in time, but something to the effect that the county council maybe should, maybe would approve the standard operating procedures for the legislative branch and the internal auditor.
Okay.
All right.
Just, the only thing that was, that I wanted to bring up was, I know in the past, we've had some back and forth on the Personnel Manual versus the contract, and I know on here, the, I'm not sure what page that is, right before Chapter 1, the language that we have in here, that one disclaimer about the Personnel Manual supersedes any replace, and replaces any prior version of the County Personnel Manual, et cetera, et cetera. The Personnel Manual does not constitute a contract, nor is it a promise of continued employment. I guess along those lines, are we, do we feel like we've updated it enough that we are clear going forward as far as the what supersedes what or what does not, what's more important, so that we don't end up in legal issues again?
That's a very standard leading paragraph for Personnel Manual.
And then, as you go, as we go through this process, whether it's corrections or the Sheriff's Department, because they do operate under their own standard operating procedures that are very specific to them, it will refer to that superseding, and also the CBA that supersedes this manual and whatever method it has to, whatever the topic is being referred to. So, those things are mentioned throughout as they need to be for those particular entities, so.
Yeah, I trust you all, just as long as that part's clear. I know that that's been an issue for the last, we've run into.
And when it's all said and done, it'll still go through the whole legal process with everybody, so that everybody, we have law looking at it to make sure we are 100% glad before we...
So, having, as Section 203 under Director of Administration, referencing the responsibilities of the Director of Administration, you might want to be more specific with that and say that the Director of Administration has that responsibility within the executive branch.
Okay. Okay.
And under 204, I have a few things. I'm going to try to get through them as quick as I can. Under 204, where the Director of Human Resources is referencing that the Director of Human Resources shall have the responsibility and authority for the overall administration for the personnel system delegated by the county executive. I think that as you get down further in referencing such responsibility and authority, you should also say that the personnel system is adopted by the county council and shall have, and shall review personnel actions.
In 204, in that area, okay.
Right. And like I said, we can provide you, you know, if...
That would be great, if you want to...
It's important to review it with you first to see if, how it works with you, how it plays that with you, but then we can, we can put greater clarification for you later.
By all means, email me, send me any of that that you'd like, and I'll take notes as best I can, but I might reach out just to clarify.
Sure. And again, I think it's, it would be similar also that when you're talking about, in Section 304, there should be, I think, some notice, again, where when you're talking about the Director of Human Resources shall recommend such amendments to the Director of Administration for approval, I would say, of classifications within the executive branch.
Okay.
And if approved, the executive branch will then submit it. Just trying to help, I think part of what you had suggested you wanted to differentiate was the distinction between the two branches.
Sure, because it just helps all the way around, definitely.
It's a similar situation, I'm not going to get into it, similar situation in 306 that are, that's there.
Okay.
And more things as far as to approve positions within the executive branch. Again, we see the same repetition in Section 307 under 2I. What else could there be? Again, and again, the distinction should be made in Section 308 under Section D.
Got it.
In 309, you have classification approval?
Mm-hmm.
Where the Director of Administration shall approve or disapprove all changes to and requests for reclassification of positions. I think we, there needs to be a clarification there that that would only be for the executive branch. That doesn't need to be in the document, but for reference, that should be the only oversight. I think it should probably say here that the Director of Administration shall approve or disapprove all changes and requests for reclassification of positions within the executive branch prior to the submission to the county council for final approval. Maybe this is a question for you, Mr. Wilber, on 310, under acting capacity. I'm wondering whether there should be a provision about an employee serving as acting director and deputy director, so that it's consistent with Charter Section 414?
Can be.
Okay.
Director and deputy director.
Yes.
Okay.
Hang on a second here. We're only doing one through three, so I can't go on all night.
I originally did six, but probably three in a time is probably a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Under, I got to get back up to the number, 310, acting capacity, again, similar, under, trying to fit it all in here, 3F, I think it is, or under, excuse me, under... Section F, 310, Section F, starts out with all appointments to acting capacity for positions. In Charter Section 315A, you know, the initial, there's a reference to the initial appointment of deputy director, that it requires council approval. The charter actually assigns on appointing an acting deputy director, so we're wondering whether the... So we're wondering whether the, whether the sentence should be, a sentence should be added to this section, that appointments to acting deputy director must be confirmed by the county council. That's part of what we're probably going to request. And since F is the last part of the alphabet in, in Section Three, that would mean I'm done.
You don't want to keep going to four?
We are on a roll right now.
I only brought one through three with me, so I can certainly run downstairs.
That's everything, anything from anyone else. I agree with F, yeah.
And as we move forward, how does the council want to do this? Do, do you want me to, us to go through each Section Three at a time as it works out until we get to the end, and then at, at the very, very end, everything we've discussed, present the whole thing for final approval at the end?
Yeah, I think so, because I think we'll vet it so carefully that at that point in time, it's not going to be as if it's going to take us a half an hour to through the whole document.
Okay, understood.
That'd be great.
That works.
So we'll be doing this for the rest of the year?
I'll see you all every time.
And we, honestly, I think we could do more than three, but just for starters.
Well, some of them, some of them you'll have one chapter where you'll, that's all you'll want for that day, and then some you'll be able to knock out.
Yeah, I don't know how you do it, I tell you, it's not my wheelhouse.
I told Ms. Hurley that I'm going to give it a birth certificate, a social security number, and a birth date and everything when it's done. Put it on my insurance.
All right, well, thank you again.
Yeah, really great work.
Very, very good job. Thank you, Mr. Wilber.
I know it needs to be done, and so when I, when you know you're, you know you're doing something that needs to be done, it helps. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is the Cannabis Social Equity Fund. Mr. Andrew Illuminati?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, how are you? Mr. Bosman, are you going to come up? Mr. Bosman, are you going to come up, or are you going to stay with her?
If you have any questions towards the end, he's available, but...
Okay.
Once we get the PowerPoint going, I'll try to move quickly. Now, if you can just go to the... That looks right. If it doesn't look, I have another one. There we go. Okay. All right, so this is the Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund. The cannabis, there's multiple ways in which money flows to the county in cannabis tax revenue. The Community Reinvestment and Repair Fund is one of them. It's a percentage of the adult-use tax revenue. There was a formula that was used by the state to come up with a percentage of how much each county would receive, and it was based upon, as you see on the third slide, disproportionate enforcement of the cannabis prohibition before July 1st, 2022. So it was number of arrests and prosecutions, and when that plays out, there were 5,923 charges between July 1st, 2022, to January 1st, 2023, in Wycomico County, which was 2.34% of the state average. So that is how much of the funds from the state will come to Wycomico County. This is made up through the nine, the current 9% sales tax on cannabis, 5% to the Cannabis Public Health Fund, 35% of that 9% to the Community Reinvestment, 5% to the jurisdiction directly, 5% to the Cannabis Business Assistance Fund, and then 50% to the General Fund. Each county is required to adopt a law establishing the purpose for which money received from the fund may be used, and every two years, and even numbered years, provide a summation of how the money was spent in the previous two years. So the fund may only be used for funding community-based initiatives intended to benefit low-income communities, funding community-based initiatives that serve disproportionately impacted areas, and any related administrative expenses. Money may not be expended from the fund for law enforcement agencies or activities, and money expended from the fund is supplemental to, and may not supplant funding that otherwise may be appropriated for pre-existing local government programs. So if every year the council gives $30,000 to the Boys and Girls Club, you can't say, we're not going to give the $30,000 this year because we're going to use this money. The Office of Social Equity conducted a survey in 2023 of which county was targeted. The public and elected officials could respond, and there was a study to sort of guide legislative bodies on how to move forward with awarding these funds. Now, these funds are different from that 5% that we talked about earlier, that is just general revenue fund that can go to a number of things outside of this, but this is specifically Social Equity Fund. So here are the, the results, there was an overwhelming percent that the public be able to participate in the awarding of the funds. Specifically, here's Wycomico County at the top. Of all the counties, Wycomico had over 80% say that the, there should be support for community involvement in the distribution and allocation of the funds. So there was also a study on what should the counties focus on prioritizing. There were these topics, and when we look at Wycomico County, number one was education after-school programs. Tied for second was mental health, substance abuse services, housing and homeless prevention, and youth engagement mentorship programs. And then all the way at the bottom is criminal justice reforms, and you can see through the highlighted that overwhelmingly education after-school programs was of those who completed the survey the desire. So then, the Office of Social Equity released these four thing, subject areas to consider when reviewing the various organizations that may receive funding, what are their current finances, what's their organizational structure, what strategy do they have, and then what are their programs? This then basically brings council to the decision of how will Wycomico County allocate Office of Social Equity funds? So the OSE survey was that it should be community-based, that it should be citizen-based, and the position is that local management board is best equipped to do that. If council wants to have full control, then it would not be a citizen-based process. Council would advertise, evaluate, and approve every award. So the local management board is made up of the, of multiple members from various aspects of the community. One of the unique parts is that they're already advertising, awarding, and completing funding paperwork, completing all the grant requirements that are necessary to be compatible with state requirements. This is something that they've been doing since their institution. Additionally, it includes parents, youth, private providers, representatives from advocacy groups, racial, ethnic, and cultural diversity, and local communities within the county. If there are any questions for the local management board, Director Tim Bosman is here. They met last week, they are more than happy to take this on. They believe they are more than qualified and will be able to do this. Again, they will be reporting back to council because that ultimately, biannual report will go to the governor, senate, and house. So these are the three actions for council. Decide the awarding source, is it going to be council, or is it going to be local management board? Adopt a law, so based on that, then there will be a first reading of a law establishing the process for which money received from the fund may be used. It's going to incorporate the mandate requirements that were discussed earlier, where funding for community-based initiatives is to be spent, and that may not be used for law enforcement, may not be used to supplement current, pre-existing, local government programs, and then enumerate the awarding source for the funds, as well as require, then the final thing will be, because this is a even-numbered year, and specifically in the legislation, it says, by December 1st, 2024, the report shall be made. This is something that will be done in short order. The other benefit of using the local management board is that they're already enabled, they're already established, they've already been, gone through council approval. It won't require advertising for a new citizen-based board, writing the bylaws, writing the guidelines, bringing all that before you. There's already over a million dollars that the county has received from this, that county has not been able to spend because we haven't been able to create an awarding board, so...
The local management board does follow all the criteria that the state would, would recommend, would authorize?
Yes, correct, and there's, so there's really...
I think that's a good fit. Do we have to change the job descriptions or anything through the local management board?
We don't have job descriptions for them that I'm aware of. I think there's a section maybe that references their responsibilities, their duties and responsibilities.
I thought it was included in the charter as one of the, as one of the departments of the county.
That's what I'm talking about, the duties and responsibilities of the board, but I don't think there's like a specific job description.
Sure, anyway, I like that, that the local management board will be handling it. I think they're, they're the most in tune with, with the community. I don't think the Police Accountability Board was ever going to be a good decision, though I know you're, everybody was looking for answers. And I seriously think that the council has to have oversight on how the final spending is done. The council would have to make, would have to approve that. I mean, that's the purpose of having the, the seven-member body here, is that, you know, we have constituents to be concerned about as well, and I, I, I'm sure that the local management board can, can very easily do a great job with it, but when you're talking this kind of money, I think you cannot bypass the elected officials in this county to have some type of oversight. It's a lot of money.
So, to help me draft the legislation, walk me through what council envisions the flowchart looking like so that the legislation can be written, drafted accordingly.
Flowchart, Mr. Bosman, would you have any input on that as far as how you recognize the fact of, of, of understanding ways to, to, to determine the needs in the community and how that might be something you would bring to us? And, because we don't want to get in the way and be obstructionist, but we certainly want to make sure that the final product has the blessing of, of the, the elected officials.
Right, so a lot of the topics that was discussed in the PowerPoint on that survey that Mr. Illuminati showed you with, like, youth home on this, mentoring, after-school education, those are already needs that we've identified through the last community needs assessment that we did, and talked about with you guys a few months ago. They kind of parallel what we already know, and that's what kind of we would be mainly looking for, is like programs and services that, you know, we would be able to award, you know, this funding to.
But you put this together similar to what you did when you came here about a month or two ago, it was, what was it, 600,000 that you were, that was awarded, the grant for recently for the computers, for the laptops?
Yes, yeah.
Would this be a situation where you could take this, and treat this funding in the same manner as if it were a grant, and then bring that before the council with the itemized expenses or awards?
I think it's how we talked about it too, is we already have the monitoring capabilities established, so when an award is made, like that grant, you know, we're already monitoring how it's spent. Our other programs where we award grants to other vendors in the county, nonprofits or whatever it be, we're constantly monitoring the performance, to making sure they're hitting the mark, serving the number of people that they're supposed to be serving, and also spending the money appropriately per, you know, the grant award from the state.
Do you also have a time period where you would announce that, you know, we are looking, we are, you know, we are looking for recipients, something to that effect? Because I'm sure that the council, we don't want to create undue influence, but I'm sure that the council might say, you know, there's a really good organization here that I really think we should, should look in, look, look at helping, and we would want to be able to share that information with you, and so you could vet it.
So I think whatever the dollar amount we're looking to use, I know there's a significant amount of money in there right now, but if we want to take a chunk of that, let's say, and put towards after-school mentoring, then whatever that chunk of money is, we would have to follow the county procurement rules as well, so we would have to put it out for a proposal, you know, for different entities to respond to us, you know, how they envision using that money or whatever. And that's where the board comes in, they review the proposals and they, you know, decide what the best fit is, you know, for what we're trying to achieve.
So, just want to make sure I understand what you're trying to say. So you don't have a problem with the board handling it? We just want to be able to approve those funds as, as needed? Is that what you're thinking?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking too.
Yeah.
Since I, my church received grants from the local management board when it was originally formed, and what we have to do, it was an after-school program, under the governor's crime prevention stuff, we had to write a grant. I think that's the first procedure. We hear about it, you do a proposal, you write the grant. And some of it was like matching funds. I think some of the grants were matching funds, I don't know how it's done now, but we had to do time sheets for employees, we had visits from the person that was in charge, you still do that?
Yep. We do site visits.
You had to do site, that's what it's called, site visits. So it's really, you have to do what you said you're going to do in the grant. And so I think that's why I support the local management board doing these fundings, because you, they really keep an eye on what you're supposed to be doing with the money, especially when children and families are involved, because that's where you're supposed to be helping people like that. So I do support them in managing this particular fund, because I was, I was part of that years ago.
And will you do that, will you be putting out some type of a request for grant, for grant?
I think, yeah, I guess once we establish however much money from this pot we want to put, and I'll just use after-school mentoring as an example, however much we want to put that towards that, then yeah, we would advertise, you know, how we normally do.
And you would have to have some agency or organization come to you and say, okay, tell me where I sign or how, where I fill this out, right?
Yep. So we would probably just use, I mean, it's pretty much mirrors what we already do now as far as the guidelines from the state, so it would be a very similar template that we would use for procurement to put these out, you know, with all the other county requests for proposals.
Just as a thought, would council entertain, like, if it's under $20,000, it doesn't need to come to council for review? Because I could see some where an entity says, we just need a few footballs, soccer balls, basketballs, and the expenditure is $500, and we're playing that in the same category. Obviously, $600,000 is a lot of money for computers, and that needs oversight, but I'm just trying to see, in working with other counties and what, seeing what the state sort of envisioning on how this could work, I could see that there are lower denomination requests that just maybe pro forma, that they're in the best position to handle. It wouldn't be something that needs follow-up? It would be acquire the athletic equipment, distribute the athletic equipment, and there's really no monitoring after that? So just trying to get as much thought here as to how to draft the legislation.
That's not a good idea.
You know, I don't want to see this fund being used politically, and I don't know whether that would happen or not, hopefully it wouldn't happen, but I, I think it would be advantageous for the council to have more oversight. You know, these four, $500 grants could head up to $10,000 grants or $20,000 grants before it's over with, because there's going to be a lot of hand, excuse me, a lot of hands out there wanting this money, so...
And I think you could probably present it when you come before the council, it's not as if you have to come here for every $500 contribution. You would come here, I would see with a collection, a total of maybe six or seven contributions at the same time, where you would, where you would, where you would just package them all together. If it becomes onerous, then we can rework it, okay? It's all new.
I know when, like, if you need to do work for the state or something, $5,000 is the max before you have to go out and bid. I don't know if there's, maybe, there's like a threshold, maybe it is $500 to be the threshold, because, I mean, I could see, I could see a lot of people jumping in, and I, I mean, we can, we can, we're going to try this out, and we'll see if we need to make an adjustment, but I, my gut feeling is that we're going to have to put a, put a cap on, 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 let's just say, $1,000, and then anything above needs to come to council. I mean, I don't know, I can see that, that happening, or that threshold being raised.
I mean, I don't know, I can see that, that happening or that threshold being raised.
I think um, it's what you want to do with the money. Um, we had to pay staff, part-time staff. We had to provide transportation. You had to submit a budget, what it would cost, um, supplies you would need, just line items, supplies for the children, food, you know, snacks or whatever, you include it in your budget when you submitted your proposal. We received thirty thousand dollars. After school program is not really cheap because you have to pay a staff person, people want to get paid. You don't get volunteers anymore, they want to get paid. So I think you need to consider all that and how much money you have available for after school program of crime prevention. And now I think the schools do that, but I'm, I'm, I'm a proponent of, of, of letting it, some things in the neighborhood. That's why our church got, you know, got the grant because we were in the neighborhood and we had two schools that we worked with, but it's, it's not five thousand dollars. Five thousand dollars really couldn't do anything, I don't think, unless it's a small project. But if you're trying to do an after school program or some kind of crime prevention program, it's going to cost a little more.
Bosman, you had a comment?
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, an after school program is going to cost expensive, but I don't, I think that's something to consider with the legislation as well, is like how time period you want these um programs expended by.
I think that'll be up to your discretion, Joe.
I, I think, I think this is a new program. I think we should, you know, um, put the controls in and see how it goes and, you know, if it shows to be burden, a burden managing it the way it is. I don't, I don't think managing money should ever be a burden, really. You know, I think that's what we're here, here to do, so.
I, I agree with you. It's, it's new, it needs oversight. I think the council should keep it.
We'll find out.
Josh?
Yeah, just to take it to the ten thousand foot level, just to, just to acknowledge, obviously, the point of this program is to, to try to make transformational change, not transactional change, right? We want to do something that's really going to get people back on a, on a path to actually making real change. The, you know, the, the policies that we had uh for drug, for drugs in the eighties and nineties destroyed the American family and a lot of this was because of cannabis, you know, or these kinds of marijuana laws. And so you've lost folks for, you know, the, the father or usually wasn't absent for, was absent for many years and that really destroyed things. So we're trying to get at, back at remediating that problem. We can't do anything what we, we screwed over a lot of American families for, for twenty five years with really bad zero tolerance policies. So this is a way to say, okay, now that it is legal, how are we uh fixing that? So I guess I'll, you know, I'll lean in. I, I think the, um, you know, I think uh having you all would be great, uh, local management board, uh, to, to um, to lead on that would be great, but I don't, I think we should be constantly thinking in terms of transformational, not transactional. I don't want to just throw out, okay, here's a couple baseballs and a soccer ball, good luck, I hope your life gets better. You know, like I want to be able to say, hey, this program for financial literacy or this thing that is going to put you on a understanding of homeownership and, and, you know, something like that. So um, I say all that, uh, how we organize it, I, I think, and also, I do, I do agree with um fellow councilmen, I think we do want to have a little bit of more, it's a new program, it's, it's a decent amount of money. I do want to make sure that we have our hands in it and there's, there's seven of us that um, that respond to different communities, I want to make sure that we're responsive there, but I'd love to see it at the local management board and I want to see it be transformational.
To answer your question, Andrew, I, I think what maybe we would want to do is to fashion some type of a, a bill or a resolution that would establish guidelines and timelines as well. Uh, maybe every six month, every six months, the uh local management board would put out a request and they would have, let's say, a month or two months to finalize that request and then bring that before the council. Uh, I would defer to Mr. Bosman to tell us exactly what that timeframe might be, understanding the fact that when you advertise for it, however you may do it, um, what the length of time might be to get the proper applicants in and to evaluate it and then give back to us. Would that be quarterly, would that be semi-annually or what?
Um, we try to do at the beginning of the fiscal year, like our, our grants now that we get through the um community partnership agreement, we put out at the beginning of the fiscal year or a little bit prior so we can start the fiscal year running on the ground with the programs. This kind of seems it's going to work a little bit differently, but typically when we put uh a request for a proposal out, it's usually somewhere near a neighborhood of thirty days people have to respond.
So could you, could you work this out in a period of six months and come to, and, and we have it whereas every six months you will be um putting out a notice, or would you make it every quarter? I want, you have to have time to review.
I think that's going to depend on how the money's flowing in and the amount of money that's flowing in.
But these would be parameters that would, they would be more of a shall, I mean, a may than a shall, just things that say you, you may report to us every six months or you may report to us quarterly.
It'd be as necessary to start.
That would, well, I guess so, except for I think we, I'd like to see some structure so that we, we know that this is getting in place, because it is a lot of money and um.
And what we also don't want to put too much, too much check-ins that it's so overburdened them on there that you're spending a whole lot of administrative time, maybe six months.
I think advertising the fund maybe s- six months may be more appropriate, but as far as reporting to you guys, maybe that could be a quarterly thing.
Well, we don't have to put that in the legislative document. Um, you said as needed, uh, no later than every six months, right? As needed, no later than every six months, that'd give you flexibility. And heck, you come in six months, say hi, goodbye, I'm not doing anything. And um, is there, uh, what about as far as an administrative fee uh for the local management board? Is that's, I, I can't imagine that's not something that should be considered? Does it allow for that?
So it's, the legislation allows for administrative costs, however, it also can't supplant any, so.
I understand, I understand a hundred percent. That's okay, I, I, I get it.
But if, if this is taking more time for staff, I mean, of course, it's going to take more time staff, the question is how much do you need to then?
So for example, if they need to hire a brand new person or move somebody from part-time to full-time, that difference could be covered by this money.
So you're going to have to though, help us figure out how to separate that out, let's say hypothetically it's ten percent, where does it go within the county, you know, how, how is that going to be separated out and how's it going to be dispersed?
Like to start, they're going to work with current staff.
Right.
And then see where this goes. Additionally, the money right now, I can't project what it will be in the future because it's dependent upon use. Now it's still novel, we're still receiving money from the payment to convert from medicinal dispensary to uh adult use cannabis. That's a one-time payment and everyone, every entity that was medicinal has already paid that. So that's already going to cut down the amount of revenue. As Delaware allows for adult use, as potentially Virginia allows for de- adult use, there's going to be less interstate travel to come to Wycomico County and surrounding counties for this. So the numbers may go down, they may hold the same. It's really a, a hard unknown, but I think the great part about L and B is that they are in a position to advertise, evaluate and award and make that recommendation to council to finalize the award.
Sounds good. Does this have to go through the administration, the executive branch before it goes through the council?
But it would be beneficial for the executive because again, working together, everyone has, has said, you're going to be aware, this members council is going to be aware of different community initiatives, Mountain County Executive is going to be aware of different community initiatives. So that's where the oversight and L and B's interaction with both sides of the government's beneficial because they're going to be able to target those programs and say, hey, this money's coming up, you should make that application.
Okay, we, we don't want to suggest that there could be a unilateral um elimination of a recommended program. We don't want to do that, but we do think it's a, it would be proper to create a courtesy where it flows through the, the chain of command. I say chain of command, where it flows through the uh executive and legislative branch both. But a- again, it, it can get really sticky, you know, if, and I say this would be, any executive would say, oh, no, no, I don't really want to do, to help this group. Then you have an individual who's unilaterally managing this program and that, that's just something that can't happen. So there could be an opinion, I think, maybe from the executive branch or recommendation from the executive branch to coincide with Mr. Bosman's presentation to the council.
And I just.
Does it make that confusing?
No, I, I perfectly got it. I guess the only thing to piggyback on that is when it comes to council and they're saying award fifty thousand dollars to this entity for this program, tinkering with that is really going to take away from L and B's role in the process and saying, we think forty five might be better than, than fifty.
I understand, I understand.
And it's really, the, the work that's going to be done, the reviewing of everything is going to be at that L and B level, uh, which is why when it gets before the executive or council to make that final sign off, it should almost be pro forma because they've really done the deep dive on.
I know.
How's it going to be done?
I know. Not to me chiefs.
Uh, exactly, and I think council recognizes that and it's a process, we can start with it, evaluate a year from now and see where it is.
Okay. And you feel comfortable though now with enough to start?
I have enough to put together a draft legislative bill.
Okay.
That could potentially be ready for, it's, would you be ready for first reader at the first meeting in May? Would you want to come back for another work session on that draft bill?
I think May would be fine.
Okay. First reader.
Hmm?
We got that.
Anybody have any other questions? No?
Sounds pretty straightforward.
Sounds like a good problem.
Yes, Bob.
Um, the uh state legislation says that this fund is to be used for community-based initiatives to benefit low-income communities, funding community-based initiatives that serve disproportionately impacted areas. And I think it's in the package that you sent, but it, the disproportionately impacted areas are the two one eight oh one and two one eight oh four zip codes. It's not the entire county.
Well, I think that's where Wycomico goes purple and sheriff's office, health department, they're going to have those additional statistics that say these other zip codes were dramatically impacted by fentanyl and the guidance that we're getting from the state level, this isn't even comar regulations, this is just advice from O S E.
I'm just ra, I'm just saying, I'm confused about it. And then there's a list of schools that they put in here, which are not all the schools in Wycomico County, doesn't include Mardella, um, doesn't include uh Fruitland Schools, it doesn't include Delmar Elementary, but it includes basically all the other schools in the county.
Well, it's, it's, we're not trying to, you know, you're not, you don't want to dilute it, the, the areas that were the most impacted.
I understand, I'm just confused as to whether they're saying that those, that's the, the primary focus is, has to be within the two one eight oh one, two one eight oh four, or is that a general guidance? And I don't know the answer to that.
Are you suggesting maybe the council needs to send a letter to say, hey, look, these are your oversights and we need you to try to correct this and give?
I think the local management board needs to understand what its guidance is, is my only point, because I, it's confusing to me because if you're in Delmar or you're in Fruitland, you're not in the zip code that they're saying is disproportionate.
Good point, Bob. I mean, I think we should look at, look into it.
And Fruitland's, I mean, Pittsville's not in it, Willard's not in it.
Part of that's going to deal with the.
Statistics.
Where everyone lives. And if the substantial concentration is in the city of Salisbury zip codes, you're going to have more there than you're going to have out in the rural parts of the county. However, as the advertisement process begins, as we see the various applications and where the applications are coming from, that can be something that L and B can work towards in their award, making of the awards. I would agree if there was a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar program for Pittsville, it better be a really good seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar program for Pittsville because that would account for three quarters when it's not within the disproportionate impact. But we know that substance abuse, substance dependency and unfortunately drug distribution spans all socioeconomic classes, all parts of the county, so.
And that's a good point.
I, I'm, my only point, maybe if, if the inclination is use local management board and it sounds like that's where it's going, maybe he can contact the Office of Social Equity and have discussions so he understands what they're, what this means.
I get it, that's, yeah, I get it.
So when he starts out, he's, he's not, we're not violating what their standards are.
I understand, I mean, I said this, I understand, um, um, years and years ago, we had the, the Salisbury neighborhood housing and we picked three locations, Camden Avenue, Church Street and the west side of Salisbury because they based it on crime statistics and lack of homeownership. And I think that um, when the local management board, even the social service department, one of the previous directors had a map and it showed where everything was concentrated at and most of the areas like Mardella and Fruitland, um, even down the, I said down the road, down, you know, Nana Cook Road, they didn't have the concentration of low-income families or, or that kind of, and that's why they targeted certain areas. And I think some of the money, that's how they targeted money, the local management board became in existence, they targeted certain areas, I can stand corrected, but uh, they targeted for, so where the money could be concentrated on, where was the crime, where is the lack of homeownership, those kind of things, and they found it to be in the particular targeted neighborhoods.
I'll leave it with this thought. The other possibility is if the guidance is that needs to be to disproportionately impacted communities, council could always make the decision based on the additional tax revenue that does not have these requirements from cannabis tied to it, to allocate that money to the other zip codes within the county for the similar purpose. So there's.
There's going to be other funding that is restricted?
Correct. So when we go back to. There's five percent of taxes collected, so of every nine cents on the dollar, this is how it's going to be attributed and five percent of the taxes collected in each jurisdiction go to that jurisdiction. Now, if you remember back to when I first came here a year ago, it has to be split wi, if it's within a municipality, two and a half percent to the municipality, two and a half percent to the county. Right now, we only have one, it's located within the city, but as the government begins to make the awards for the additional dispensaries, that number could change. So there is going to be money that will be received from cannabis tax revenue that will not be encumbered with restrictions on it. So that's something to consider long-term, but I believe we have a great framework to start with for the money that is encumbered.
Do you incorporate the unencumbered with the same legislative bill?
We don't know how much money that's going to be at this time, it could be de minimis. Because the first thing it's going to do is it's going to fa, fund the cannabis administration because it has to be self-reliant, so.
I would work on future amendments, that's.
All right.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much, Mr. Bosman.
Thank you. All right, so I'll have a draft prepared for the first meeting in May.
Thank you, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Well, next item we have, Mr. Illuminati, is the ethics laws.
Correct, and I'll try to make this one very short. So the state process on that is the state ethics commission has to approve uh any code amendments that council makes to the code regard, for ethics ordinances. And additionally, uh biannually, the legislature reviews the ethics code and makes changes based on uh what has been seen throughout the state. Rather than come to you with a first draft of legislative bill, have you pass it and then send it up to the state for approval, in which case they could potentially veto it, it's easier to come to with what the changes would potentially be to the county code, how they model, how they parrot the model ethics law. And so for example, we have to add some definitions to the county code to, for home address, uh, what interest is, uh, and it's pretty sus- sufficient. These changes came about from the Healthy Holly scandal with uh the mayor of Baltimore and uh, so these changes are substantially based on that. If, it's coming directly from state law, realistically, the county doesn't really have a say in it, uh, but the state ethics commission needs to approve because there are, there is some tweaking, you'll see it's not verbatim, so it meets the county's needs, but it's substantially the same. So if there's a consensus to move forward with these ethics changes as required by state law, it will, they'll be sent to the ethics commission at their next meeting, they'll send a letter back saying we approve or disapprove of the proposed. send a letter back saying we approve or disapprove of the proposed amendments, if they approve it, then we'll be before you with the first legislative bill to make the changes. So, uh, as I said, this is from the model ethics law, you can see at the top, version A, uh, this is all provided in the briefing book in advance for the last two meetings. So if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, but realistically, what I'm saying is, like here in 37-11, what's not highlighted is what's in the current county code, and they added this B section, so that's being incorporated in the highlighted portion. So. All right.
Any questions or concerns? Yes, Josh?
Just one question, the, I know in, in previous jobs that I had, that I, I had to register with specific counties as a lobbyist to, for that county, and there was multiple counties across the shore, do we, Wycomico County, by the way, separate, I guess, kind of separately from this, I guess, do we have our own, um, process to have a public individual register as a lobbyist for the county?
So that's really what's getting added at this time, you'll see, like, when I pumped it in here, this is a former regulated lobbyist, so we have some light lobbyist legislation now, but it's really, this is going to be substantially increased to add these post-deployment limitations for former public officials, former elected officials, contingent compensation, so, uh, yeah, we have something, the state says it needs to be increased based on some scandals across the bridge, and we're going to address those.
Cool. Thank you.
Yes.
I interpreted this mostly as, I think maybe you referenced it, just us looking at what is, uh, being recommended by the state, and we're simply accepting that recommendation.
Correct, and basically instructing me to forward our proposed recommendations up to the state ethics commission for final approval, then we would go through the normal legislative bill process to amend the code, so it would be first reader, public hearing, advertisement, second reader. So we're, we're not completely going around, but it's sort of analogy, be like the planning commission, text amendment goes to the planning commission, it works its way up to council at the end of the day, but here we're just saying to a state ethics commission to say, these are proposed changes, get the letter blessing them, and then move forward.
Are you okay with this? As it's, as it's written?
All right. All right, thank you very much, I know that's tedious, and thank you for your work tonight, I know it's a long night, you have much to do.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Padge.
Andrew.
Yes.
If you want to stay and hang out, you can.
Next item on the agenda is the overview of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore, we have with us, Mr. Greg Padge, executive director, Mr. Andrew, is it Wile?
Wile.
Yes, Wile, transit director, and Ms. Monique Snyder, regional communications developer. For the public, just let every, let the public know who is whom, who is who, whichever.
Thank you very much, council, you have a lot of work to do, it's late at night, and we appreciate the ability to come before you, thank you also to the administration for allowing us to come before you. As you know, every year, we make a fiscal year request for local match funding for transit, but before we went into that, I, I know that you've already seen the letter that we've given to the executive, I wanted to give you a brief overview of what the council is and what you get for your money, over and above just transit, public transit. First of all, we're an independent state agency, and under our enabling legislation, the local governing bodies of Somerset, Wycomico, and Worcester Counties, the legislation says that they shall appropriate a minimal annual amount of $10,000 each. We use that for operating expenses and some of the branding and marketing projects that we're engaged in. Everything else comes from the state or the feds, and there's no cost to the county. I would say one thing about the, the Tri-County Council, from its very inception, it was all about broadband development. The Tri-County Council and Mid, and the Midshore Regional Council, which is Dorchester, Caroline, and Talbot Counties, they were intrinsically involving the expansion and the further development of broadband service to the eastern shore. What there was, was a governor's eastern shore economic development task force from 2000 under Governor Glenn Denning. There were two rec, of the recommendations that came out of there, two of them were the following, one, create a permanent regional planning organization, including the timely implementation of the recommendations of this task force. Recommendation four was implement a high-speed fiber optic network on the eastern shore of Maryland to meet current and future needs. In 2002, 2003, a request for proposals for studies were submitted by the Tri-County Council, and it resulted in the Maryland Eastern Shore Broadband Network Strategic, uh, Strategic Plan Final Report. In 2003, the Tri-County Council followed the, the Midshore Regional Council in submitting the first regional comprehensive economic development strategy port, uh, report. In 2004, uh, the Yankee Group Research Municipal Broadband Assessment was completed, it was financially supported by, among others, the Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland. In 2006, during a legislative session, Senate Bill 753, Rural Broadband Communication Services was established for the purposes of creating the Ru, the Maryland Rural Broadband Coordination Board, the Tri-County Council was on that board. The legislation enabled the Maryland Broadband Co-op to be formed and receive initial, and receive initial funding of $8 million. In 2006, with considerable input from the Tri-County Council, the Articles of Corporation were drafted for the Maryland Broadband Cooperative and accepted by the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation. At that point, the executive director of the Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland was put on the Board of Directors of Maryland Broadband as one of only five Class A members. So you, the Tri-County Council, you're one of only five Class A members in this statewide organization. In 2007, Maryland Broadband Cooperative, Cooperative partnered with the Tri-County Council to receive $3.2 million in E D A grant to build out eastern shore fi, an eastern shore fiber network, more than half of this amount went to redundancy around Salisbury. Uh, in 2007, Maryland Broadband created a direct fiber link between Pa, Pax River and Wallops and onto Baltimore and the coordination board was, uh, which was composed of the rural Maryland Council Chairman and the five Maryland State Secretaries and your regional council, the Tri-County Council. We directed funds in trenches to Maryland Broadband to have that build out done for Pax River. In 2008, Maryland Broadband entered into a griev, a, a Maryland Broadband Cooperative entered into an agreement with the U S Navy to run six miles of fiber optic cable under the Chesapeake Bay from Cove Point in Calvert County to Taylor's Island, Dorchester County, to create redundant link between Pax, Pax River and Wallops, total investment was $24 million from D O D. Your Tri-County Council set on the Board of Directors, made the decisions for that money and signing that contract. In 2009, the Tri-County Council submitted requests and documentation to E D A to become a permanent E D A Economic Development District, so you are now in a permanent economic development district, E D A, under E D A. In 2009 to 2014, during that series of years, uh, the, uh, there was a broadband mapping and planning grant for $6 million from National Transportation, I'm sorry, from N T I A. A partnership between Maryland Broadband Cooperative and Salisbury University created uh, E S R G C or Eastern Shore Regional G I, G I S Cooperative, the Tri-County Council was a founding member of that and still funds it. This is just broadband, as you can see, there are a lot of other things up here, too. The total investment is almost $200 million since about 2002, and the Tri-County Council has been right smack dab in the middle of it. The Tri-County Council also sits on the Board of Directors of the Rural Maryland Council. It also sits on the M P O. Our relationship with the Rural Maryland Council is essentially a founding member. It is a semi-independent government agency under the Maryland Department of Agriculture. It was dead in the water, there was no funding, nothing was happening. The Tri-County Council for the Lower Eastern Shore of Maryland and the Midshore Regional Council got that funding, went up to Annapolis, spent a lot of time, spent a lot of money, bought nice ties, sat in front of people, and made sure it got funded. This happened under my predecessor's tenure. Currently, it is fully funded, its funding last year and this year was more than $9 million. If you look up here, the money that has gone to the lower shore just in, let's see, where is it?
This might be.
There it is, RIMP F in the bottom, from fiscal year 19 through fiscal year 24, the RIMP F funding to the TriCount, or to the, to the lower shore has been $9.37 million. That's all state money, and the match is usually in kind from an organization or a city or a county. Our relationship with E D A, if you look at the funds up here, in E D A, the total funding, this is at the bottom, E D A funding FY02 to FY24, approximately $12.6 million has come to this area through E D A, and that is primarily because you are an E D A Economic Development District, that includes the $5.52 million upgrade, uh, E D A investment for the Civic Center. The Workforce Development Board, in 2003, the counties made the decision to leverage the efficiencies of the Tri-County Council as the regional economic development planning agency by delegating the authority to administer the Workforce Investment Board and the state and federal funds associated with same. From fiscal year 19 to Q3 of FY24, state and federal funds brought to the lower shore through the, the Workforce Development Board are approximate, approximately $16.435 Administrative Services Division of the Tri-County Council, it does two things besides keeping that nice office complex there for people like the Maryland Department of Labor and others to sit in. It also has, it collects rent from its tenants, it also provides payroll and other, other services to 11 counties around the state of Maryland. That money is to, to a large extent, re, unrestricted, we are able to use that money as kind of a bridge loan to keep some of these programs going until the comptroller of Maryland pays us state and federal monies, their federal monies that are administered through the state. So we're using that business model there to help us keep these other programs going that are funded by the state and the feds. Shore Transit, if you look at Shore Transit, this is the money that's come from the state and the feds, just from fiscal year 19 through Q3 fiscal year 24, and that right there, that totals almost $36 million. This is not money that you did, this is money that we got because you provided the local match that is required by the state and the feds to get that federal money and that state money. And then I'm going to, before I turn it over to Andy, I wanted Monique to give you just a little bit of an idea of what we do with regard to branding and marketing for the region and getting people to know who we are, what we do, not the Tri-County Council, but the region itself. Monique?
Good evening, everyone, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present before you. My name is Monique Snyder, I am the regional communications developer for the Tri-County Council, and I'll just share a few of our regional marketing efforts this evening. So the Tri-County Council provides the following services to increase visibility of the businesses and industries of Wycomico County in, in the region. Those industries range from agriculture to manufacturing and tourism. The regional economic development website, lesmd.net, designed and maintained in-house by the Tri-County Council. For example, just recently, the search term eastern shore agriculture crops recently delivered a Google Analytics-driven result from the, this website at the top of the page, so we were on the first page of Google. In-house designed regional billboards, branded merchandise, other printed materials such as the Lower Shore Regional Economic Development Guide, exhibitor at the Ocean City Trade Show, Maryland Association of Counties Summer Conference, and the Rural Maryland Conference, where the Tri-County Council acts as a back office and promoter of the Lower Shore County Economic Development and Tourism Offices. Sponsorship of the Lower Shore General Assembly Wrap-Up and Luncheon, J A Inspire, the Eastern Shore Luncheon at the Winter Mako Conference, Rural Maryland Day in Annapolis and others, plan and execute the annual Taste of the Eastern Shore Legislative Reception in Annapolis, which includes a personal visit by the Tri-County Council staff to every single office of the House of Delegates and the Senate prior to the event of 400 people itself, and represent the region to business persons and officials around the state, including the secretary level and office of the governor.
I don't think that can be overlooked, I mean, that's, that's, that's discreet lobbying that you can't, you can't, you can't judge the value of how great that is to meet with them individually and independently.
So, so that's what we wanted to do, because we do come before you each year, and, and we ask in our fiscal, our new fiscal year budget, local match funding for regional transit, we wanted to, to let you know some of the other things that we do and have done for more than 20 years, and with that, I'd like to turn it over to Andy.
Did I interrupt you, Monique?
Nope, that was the end.
That's the end, okay.
Yes.
I'm sorry. She and I staged this beforehand, so I knew, I knew it to start. I hope other than to cut her off.
It was planned.
I'd like to turn it over to Andy, if you have any specific questions regarding our FY25 request for, for, for funding for transit, but before we did that, I would, wish you would allow Andy to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the efficiencies we are building into the system.
Sure.
So that the transit system itself is more efficient, is not just burning up tires and gasoline.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you.
Propane.
I'm your transit director, Andy Wile. Came to you last year with a lot of problems and a lot of issues, and I wanted to thank you for fully funding our request for operational local match, which is federally mandated for all of our programs. So one question that was asked to me that I really was sort of caught off guard with was what do we get for the money, so I'm going to give you that bit of information. We came to you with a three-year plan, we were anticipated to be $1.3 million over budget this year, and we were $800 million over budget at the time we spoke last. We had a three-year plan that would bring us to a balanced budget. We made some efficiencies, we made some changes, some service cuts that we felt were minimal, as much, I don't mean to minimize them, but they were a small amount of the total. We did a lot of internal work, and surprisingly enough, we would be able to balance the budget this year completely.
That's good.
It is, and it is, it is because of the people that worked there that committed to making the change that they hated because they believed in it. We also were told that we were going to be receiving a great deal more funding, MTA has said all along, they don't actually know why we get what we get, other than we always got what we got, and we were flat funded since 2008, and there's no more money in the bucket. They have committed to the funding formula change this year, which is based on, 10% of it's based on population, and the other 90% is based equally on hours driven, miles driven, and trips. What that does for Shore Transit is enable us to accept $1.8 million of federal and state funding.
Additional.
Additionally, on top of what we had always gotten, it's a 77% increase as long as we have the local match. What we have, and that came in the crux of receiving two different letters, so we had to make an amendment. What we came to the conclusion is, is that it would be irresponsible to accept the, to request money for the entire amount because we can't responsibly use it. We're not prepared to do 77% more work in an efficient and effective manner. We've been preparing, we are recruiting, we are training our own people, and it is working, but we're not ready. What we're asking for is, with the local match and the state and federal, a total of an additional $1 million, and that represents about 10,000 hours of service. What that means for Wycomico County is an additional $175,913 of local match, local operating match, plus there is a very small amount in S-STOP, which is statewide specialized transportation assistance program from the state, that's what does the elderly and the disabled transportation in Wycomico County, the other two counties do their own, they have now, it's now in regulation that they attach, uh, cost of living, that's the wrong term, but it's 3%, it's actually pi, 3.14% increase this year, and it will continue to be tied to that, so it's a small amount of money, I believe it's $1,500 of additional match from Wycomico County to leverage about $6,000 worth of additional. So the, the difference, we are. So the, the difference, we are requesting Tri-County Council's $951,499. What we're going to do with that, we are already, because we committed to turning on the services that we suspended, we are doing that as we speak. As a matter of fact, we're listening to Councilman Winn. Help me connect the dots with a need. And we're, we're adding a stop. We're working with Salisbury University for, and the city of Salisbury with some guidance within Salisbury. We are turning on some regional service that we had turned off. We are going to talk with MTA tomorrow about figuring out how to get dialysis transportation backward belongs in a way, in a way that doesn't break the budget. We did that with SSTAP before. We, we took $180,000 program and used 400 and some odd thousand dollars worth of service. That was part of the, so now we're committed to fixing it. We also are on the, on the verge. Within the next two weeks, we should be able to see vendor proposals. We've received a grant, $360,000 grant for areas of persistent poverty. So Salisbury is great. They, they, people need to come to Salisbury. People need to come to Fruitland and up and down this corridor. It's important. It's a, it's a major hub. But there's a lot of people who live in places like down the Annacoke Road and Willards and, and places in the center of the county that don't even show up on Google Maps, but people live there. Real people live there. And this study is designed and focused on them. And we're getting, it's $360,000 to do a complete redesign. So we're cautiously turning on service that we, we know that there's a need, and it won't, it won't hurt anything that we do it. But in six months, I anticipate that we will have expert guidance on how to redesign this study and how to do it better. And that includes what vehicles we use. We don't need large vehicles that can't get into rural areas. They, they land lock us. So we've already committed some funds. I'm asking you, please, to consider doing what you had done last year, which is providing us the fully requested operational, all the local match that, that we need, and we will continue to do more with your money than we've done before. And we will continue to have an open ear at your request. I will, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was just thinking, the cannabis was just here, and we're talking about the LNB getting money. Is that something that Tri-County Council can apply for? That, that money from the cannabis? Because we've got a million dollars from, from the, from the state, from the, you know, from receiving money from the cannabis. I didn't know, I'm just thinking outside of the box. I mean, you're saying Salisbury and Fruitland and lower income housing. And that seems to me like that, it's in that, it might fit in that parameter to where you can apply. I'm not saying that we're not going to give you the money. I'm just saying like, that's another avenue as well.
It can't supplement it anyway. It can't, the cannabis funds can't supplement whatever we may have.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it, it won't supplement it now, no. But I was just thinking that that might be another avenue to get money.
Most important, I think it's another avenue to make sure that we're seeing these people that we haven't been able to see before. So if, if there is no more money to be had, there is local knowledge about the populations that I don't see. I don't realize they're there. And, and that is, that's a great avenue. And we're really limited on the way that we can use money, and we can accept money, and we have to be very, very careful. We can't compete with local business, and we can't compete, and we have to be cautious about how, which funding sources, where the money comes from, so that we are not double-dipping.
Right. Well, it's, it's something we could look into. We could see how it might fit in the overall project.
Right.
But now, we appreciate the, the presentation. We really do. I, I, I think it's important for everyone to recognize just how much the state does rely on Tri-County Council when they're determining how they're going to distribute the funds or the grants that they might have to the local level. They certainly do depend on Tri-County Council. We saw that with Hogan when he came down here with 10 million. Where did it go? It went to the Tri-County Council. And I think you did a great job of dispersing it locally.
Yeah. If I, if I may say, this is Greg Padgeon again, Executive Director. The reason the 10 million was put through the five regional councils, of which we are one, is because of the template that had been created with RIMPF funds through Rural Maryland Council. Because of the grant and sub-grant aspect of that, the reporting, the reliability of it. And so when they were looking around for a way to put this $50 million out there, someone up at the state, I won't say who, said the regional councils. The regional councils and RIMPF is a good model. That's the way that they've been doing it, and let's, let's do that. And we trust the regional councils to, and I'm not the regional council, you're the regional councils, you're one-third of the regional councils. We trust them to, as boots on the ground, to decide how to distribute it.
Right. But, you know, don't take away from yourself either. I mean, you, you have this, the Tri-County Council that we have now is, is on, is a Tri-County Council on steroids. From what all of you are operating, because we sit in the meetings on a regular basis, and I can see the difference in just, you know, so many years ago, and you surround yourself, as you have here, you surround yourself with stellar talent. I've seen, I've seen Monique's work personally, and it's absolutely amazing what you do. And the comment about first on the Google list, that's not easy to accomplish. And Andy, I've witnessed your presentations as well, 10, 20-fold as far as what you're doing in providing more services. And I mean, cutting down to a fine science. So I really do appreciate what you've done with that as well. So.
He's a, he's a quick thinker and a quick study.
If he says he's going to do it, he does it. Yeah.
Yeah, imagine that.
Yeah, right.
Got some luck going on there, too.
Any questions from anybody?
Appreciate your good work.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the time.
Thank you very much.
Sorry to hold you up so late.
Oh, no problem. We're just happy to be here.
Definitely worth it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ten and motion to adjourn to go to closed session. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.